I changed that. It's six o'clock, so I'm gonna call this meeting to order. Welcome, everyone. Beautiful evening. This meeting is being recorded using all technology and will be available on the city's YouTube channel. We have been experiencing some technical difficulty, but hopefully we've got that solved. It may be a positive experience in the future. All right, we'll move on to roll call. Please, council state your name. Mary Lynn Ray.
Nicole, Darren Bossinger, Mike here, Tom Murray.
Thank you. Let's move on to the consent agenda. Everyone had a chance to look at the consent agenda?
I did have one question looking through here. For the library board minutes. Let me find this and maybe Chad can answer. Are you guys having architects looking to build in new buildings or just add to the existing one?
Add to the existing.
Just add to the existing? They're not doing up any plans for a new building or anything like that?
I don't believe so.
I just wanted to be sure we were clear on that because I thought for some reason we were talking about possibly expanding. But I didn't think we were gonna spend money on possibly looking to build a new one. What?
I said sheriff, sir.
That's what I thought you said.
Sorry.
He can wait. That's all I'm here. We're talking to you.
Do you land for a new place?
No.
That's sound okay.
Wondering. Any other questions on the consent agenda?
I'm sorry, I had one question to you had written down. When your maintenance department could work, you have down not enough.
Oh, hang on a second. That's we're on the consent agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry. Or.
Or number four.
Yeah.
For the Casey's permits, or anything that's come up since the last approval is?
Okay, anything else? I'm moving to approve the consent agenda.
Sorry.
On paper. I.
Bye.
Thank you. We'll move on to reports and then the sheriff's deputies here. For those.
Hi, I'm Deputy Chairman of the Sheriff's Office. Hours for the month of April were met from April ninth to May fourth. We had seventeen calls per service. Mostly driving stops. Two fraud calls. So. You guys have any questions, comments for this one?
Any questions for the deputies? Thank you. Have a good night. Thank you. All right, now we move on to the department reports. Kathy answered one question. Does anybody have any other questions for Kathy on the library department report? The chief is here. Any questions on the fire department report? About Chris's building report. I do have a question for the council on Chris's report. I don't know if you noticed it. That he mentioned that there were potentially forty plus notices that could go out regarding parking on the grass. So I just wanted the council's feedback on that. Make sure that you're aware of costs that we incur. We do that approximately ten dollars a notice for mailing labor materials. If the notice is refused and the sheriff has to serve it, that's approximately sixty dollars. We have to spend a note, a second notice. That's the same cost that we incurred for the first notice. And I just want to make sure the council's aware of that. You had any questions? And.
And so they haven't been sent out yet?
Not. No. And just so that you're aware, there's a lot of them.
Is there, are you have a suggestion or something on what to do or a direction or just making it aware or?
Both. That making you aware before it happens. The only other options would be what I've been trying to do is Chris makes me aware of a violation. And there's opportunity, then I try to actually call or Chris will call the people involved before sending the notice. With forty plus, that's a little much to be doing, but we could still. We could potentially send a courtesy notice or we could do nothing. But we do have an ordinance against parking on the grass.
If you send them the first notice, they just have, they're just, they're just told they, they don't get fined or anything. They just get told they have to move.
It's the standard form. It threatens a fine within seven days or something, but we, we never do. It's months before we ever take any action like that.
I think we need to send them because obviously the people are doing it again, so.
It's an ordinance. You're following through with what the ordinance says, right?
Yeah, so. Yeah, they sent me to the class of not preparing the notices so they hold up in court because if you send one that isn't to the standard, it's gonna hold up in court. You might as well say. Is you guys making a phone call ahead of time? That's kind of a courtesy also. So I mean, that typically is all a call.
Not when there's just many. Because there's so many, thought it might be worthy of a brief discussion.
Sure.
I would say send the first batch and then see who we still have that's. How many we have still that are in violation after the first round goes out.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, Mary.
So I go ahead and send the first ones out and then see still in violation after that. Cause I noticed that too. There's people are parking campers are everywhere.
And trailers, boats.
And it's not just residential, it's businesses as well. Some mixture. Okay, that's the feedback that we were.
I have one question for Chris. On that, a word of violation. And you can, you don't have to answer me. I can email, like temporary structures on residential properties like on driveways, things like that, like set up tents and stuff like that. How long are those allowed?
I don't know. Do we have anything in our ordinance that we prevent it?
Prevent it? You mean like the graduation party? No, like if someone set up a tent in their driveway and it's kept in there for years.
Kind of like a garage.
If they're alive.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Like a canopy? Like a closed canopy, yeah.
Yeah, I put a parking fair.
Oh, I don't know what you're talking about. Yeah, that's been there a lot. Yeah. I don't know that there's anything in our ordinances which has been mentioned to me repeatedly. And I told, I didn't know I'd have to. Yeah, I don't, I can check through and see. You know, there's something in there missing, but I don't know if anything could keep this happening. I just want to make sure it's not a hot damn thing. Not really. Yeah, there is. That's all. Yeah, I did notice that when I was doing my spring sweep. But I don't know if that's a new kind of violation.
Gotcha.
So I usually wait till the first mowing is spring sweep because that's when you can tell the trailer, we use that a lot.
Any other questions for Chris on his building report?
It's a good question on that. The mowing, our nights. So they started, like there was.
Yes, a biddle bit. Oh, you got a flat tire. I hope you notice that you're facing a tire today.
Now, I did.
On that big tractor, one of the rear tires is live, so.
What's the, so after they get through that mowing, what's, what's the the height requirement?
Eighteen inches though. Okay. Undeveloped property.
I apologize for that. We ran into a snag on our end two. We're gonna be up there tomorrow finishing our part all. So my apologies, but with the rain, we can't drag mud on the street either, so. But I do understand where you're all coming from. What the former mayor said was we could mow the front part of the lots up to the electric boxes and then leave the back of the lots grow. I don't know whether you agree with that in or not. Latch and remote every minute of the time, so just your input on that. If you don't want us to mow the whole thing.
Well, getting, getting the edges would, would definitely help because the problem is like if you're going towards media right around Cardinal, we're right around that. You can't see any, I mean, there could be a truck coming by and you don't see it, but last.
Yeah. Especially at the height. We always do the fronts and the corners right away. I know, I know it's really late this year. I apologize. But I will be out there tomorrow doing it myself, so. That'll be taken care of. All the corners tomorrow and that the lots leaving their new houses and the older dishes will get that many people.
Any other questions on the building department report? Okay, any questions for Lynn on the maintenance department report?
Yeah, sorry, I jumped the gun earlier. Lynn, in your, in your notes, you had challenges encountered. And I'll read what you had put in there. For all the repairs needed on the streets, our budget only allows for part of them being fixed or patched. It would be nice to someday fix or replace more of the damaged concrete streets and even elaborate.
Yeah, we'll get into that a little bit with the road builder stuff coming up later in the meeting, but every year that I've been here, we, that's pretty much all we do. Where the budget allows for the chicken seal and little spots here that are something plus up really bad. So if you drag down like front street, for example, you look at that street, it's once they're shot, it's a shot, it's cracked all over. We go up that avenue, the the first fifty foot, it's shot and already needs replaced for the construction going down, but it's just the one way. Putting our budget as you look at, so I didn't talk about it. There is no keys or no plan, money to support that because of the taxes and the penalties. Government, certain problems in some areas. Oh, yeah.
He's, you're talking about a completely build like we did on the first, right?
Yeah, it'd be nice to do more like that. If you talk about, if you talk about as well, there's it's not only down here, it's all, everybody's got, it's got got streets up and down, grain. Yeah, but it's very serious. Their standard practices for general maintenance, they're actually sitting over there and things like that. So it's got all the maintenance practices. Yep. So it's really scary to think about, thinking. And the street going further in the hole.
Maybe it'll get closer to that, maybe in the fall or something. I addressed that, bring that up.
Well, you can, that can go back to church. We have a standard rule that way leaning toward church.
And that's major, the major one, obviously.
But it's, it's kind of thrown back.
There, there is a small longer budget in the CIP, but it's always a good idea. It never gets bombed down. It's like a hundred, hundred fifty thousand just to plan and identify streets that need maintenance or patch replacements. As a reminder.
Other things that helps is if you have a water grid unfortunately, then it'll be bad. So that's why on the street.
Yeah.
It's a great.
Well.
It's all, it's gonna have that in there to bring it up, especially so it
Yeah.
Reminds us off and off rest of the year and it's probably comes up at a period of time for discussion towards the end of the year.
It's longer on here, the more you see in order, unless we do. It's must read. Not a lot we do.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any questions for Brian on his water and wastewater report? If not, Joe's gonna arrive late, so we can hold on that one if you wish, unless you don't have any questions, we'll just move faster. Can we move just faster? All right, any questions for Cynthia on the city hall department report? If not, on the mayor's report, I just have one additional comment. I mentioned in my report that we had a kickoff meeting for the Lynn County Hazard Mitigation Plan update. This is a plan that was developed five years ago, something like that. So it gets updated every five years and it involves a committee. Did in the past, but we're gonna be forming a committee that potentially could include a council member, so I'm just gonna give you a heads up. It's not due until the summer. We need with Representative from EC cog to move forward with that. But more to follow, just be aware that we'll be working on that soon. All right, any questions for Shane on the engineering report? Okay, now we'll move on to number six. We have with us this evening, Joe with Cedar Rapids, Lynn County Solid Waste Agency with our annual update.
All right, Mayor, council members, thanks for having me back. Appreciate it. I am here to go over some changes we have coming up with our tipping fees, some new services and programs, and then I'll look at what's going on for future planning for where the landfill closes. So start off, we, I'll talk about our two locations here today. Site two is the landfill and recycling location on County Home Road. Site one is on Mont Trashmore, the closed landfill that's on our recreation area. And then site three is our compost facility down next to the Mont Trashmore near Check Village. So jumping right into it, I guess FY twenty five, starting on July first, this summer, the garbage disposal fee is gonna go up three dollars per ton, currently forty five. It's gonna be going up to forty eight dollars. I have a known charge over maybe twenty two. Then the flat fees will stay the same. So come out there and you're in a car, like a Toyota Camry or a Chevy Malibu, it's twelve dollar flat fee. You're in an SUV, minivan, crossover, station wagon, it's a fifteen dollar flat fee. And then pickups, both size vans are twenty two dollars. So like for my folks, if you're in a pickup truck and you have one bag of garbage, you're gonna get charged twenty two dollars. So use your current side services. It's cheaper to get that extra sticker from Republic than it is to drive all the way out to see us. So if you're coming to see us, make sure you have that pickup or SUV, completely full of your money's worth. Yard waste going up a little bit too. Currently twenty eight, going up to thirty dollars per ton, the minimum mode of ten dollars. And we no longer take any yard waste out of County Home Road location. We moved out of all operations for yard waste brush, including at A Street Southwest. That'll be as big a deal for you guys. So if you don't even want to take out trees or anything like that, get rid of a lot of stuff, make sure that's going down to A Street. And then our commercial recycling is going up a little bit as well. This is the stuff that gets dropped off in the city of Marion and then red sanitation that picks up a lot of the northernly county communities. And so we've got, when we take this over Republic for processing, you can charge a hundred eighteen dollars per ton. So that helps us also the cost of overcan recycling. Still want people to continue to recycle. So for bringing out materials to us at County Home Road, no charge for residents. This is your paper, plastic, cardboard, aluminum steel cans. We also take the glass out of that location. I know that you guys will be adding your glass drop off here at Republic. That's great. So what's gonna happen with that is, once your container gets full, just let Republic know. They will take it to our A Street location. We have a glass bunker there. And that bunker is designed to hold about twenty five tons of glass. So once that gets full, we call Ripple Glass is who comes and gets it. They're out of Kansas City area, so they come about twice a month. We average about fifty five tons of glass per month. They get simmered in. So that's, they'll really help that out. And what's nice about them is clear colored glass mixed together, doesn't matter. You can drop that in there. And then when it gets taken out there, Ripple is a subsidiary of Boulevard Hurry. So it's either used to make new beer bottles for Boulevard or, and they make insulation for corny as well. So and all that glass is generated in county is either new beer bottles or insulation. So it's a really good program. Yeah, like I said, I think about yearly, we divert like six hundred tons of glass. So, yeah, so that's great. So glad that you do that. I think you and Mount Burton are out of like two TVs. They're gonna have a flash drop off, so good for you. That's awesome. For our recycling programs out there, County Home Road appliances are staying the same. So ten dollars per unit, scrap metal, no charge of scrap metal. Tires, tires are going up a little bit. Right now they're three dollars per tire. Starting July first, it's gonna be four dollars per tire. It's off around five dollars, but it's on the rim. The reason for this increase is there's basically one tire recycler for the entire Midwest, the retired out of the point. And so when they tell us that the prices are going up, the prices go up. We're basically just a no man, we're not making any money on this, but that's just a necessary impact on community. And then batteries and medical sharps, those are still gonna charge. People drop those off. In the past, I mean, here in Atlanta, we tried to do a big education push with batteries. Alkaline batteries don't need to be recycled, you can throw those away. But now a lot of lithium batteries that we want to see recycle, they look like alkalines. So just to make it easy for everyone, if you have any type of battery, bring it to us. Don't throw it away. Cause we still have about two to three buyers a week that start out in the landfill from batteries. It's mostly the bigger stuff like coming out of computers, things like that. They get hit by the dozer, the compactor, they crack open the air and I said, we have a person whose job is called the spotter. That's really what they're out there to look. It's like see what's coming in. So they see the little proof go up and we contain it right away. So we've not had a big fire like Iowa City has several years ago. But fire is the scariest thing for us. So any battery, please bring it to us. It's County Home Road, we'll take it for no charge. TVs and monitors staying the same. It's fifteen per unit regardless of size and weight. And then all other electronics are no charge. And we're actually are just adding a new service to this. It's gonna be in a week. We're gonna start taking old DVDs, VHS tapes and CDs. So a lot of people still have those. You know, people are starting to get rid of them because they don't hold up and they don't want them anymore. So we'll start taking those as part of our electronic recycling program inside a research recovery building. And then household materials, still no charge, still paints, cleaners, stains, chemicals, lawn fertilizer, especially this time of year, people buy a lot of stuff and they don't use for lawn or garden. We can take that in as well. And our hours are the same on County Home Road. So Monday through Friday, seven to four, and then Saturday by appointment. You can schedule us on our website. It's pretty easy. So if you have someone who doesn't want to use the computer, they can call us. We'll schedule the forum for that Saturday. And then moving on, let's see here, to the new services that we've added since the last time I was here, well, recycling, we finally found an outlet. So we take hard cover and soft cover books, no charge. Those drop off right and set sand, building us everything else. And then our textile recycling. So any old clothing, household goods, as long as they're clean, clean and dry, you drop those off regardless of the condition. And make sure that they get recycled or put to reuse. And I just want to remind that with that, like a lot, there's a lot of other places to donate, you know, Goodwill's great, Salvation Army, Central Furniture Rescue takes the large items, you know, people using their homes. So we just want to make it easy for folks that they're bringing garbage out to, they want to get rid of everything, what's happened, what's up shop. We always encourage people, use every option that you can that's out there. As for our compost facility, we do have a supply of green compost right now. It's free for residents, landscapers, it's twenty eight per ton to purchase it. And then for communities, if you guys have any big projects or not here that the community needs compost, we'll get that for you for no charge. So just know that you're heading down there, a little bit of scale. You know, this is for the city of Fairfax, it takes as much as they need, no charge. And the wood chips too. You know, I told you this in the past, we used to charge wood chips, they're really good twice ground material. Now, since Ray show, we still have a huge supply of twice ground, good landscaping wood chips. So those are available to the city of any those training, escaping projects, let us know, take as much as you want. And the trash more trails are now open. Mont Trashmore challenge is going on, that trash more challenge is going up and down Mont Trashmore a hundred and forty times. That's the equivalent of scaling Mount Everest. It's a district down in the New York area, puts that on. There's prices that you get for how tangible it is. So if you're interested in doing that, it's a great way to stay shaded and has great at the top. So please go check it out. Moving on to forward twenty forty four. This is for our future planning. We know that we have to close the County Home Road location, June thirty to twenty forty four. However, we're gonna be full much sooner than then. Right now, at current levels, the garbage that we receive, we can get over six hundred tons of garbage per day. We're gonna be full in twenty thirty six. So that means the landfill will be full. So when that happens, our board is gonna be, how we're gonna handle garbage to that point, what we're gonna do beyond twenty forty four. So we've been going through this process, getting at different options. If we'll go to the next slide there, Cynthia. Going through the process of like, taking what that organics management, which is a big part of it, twenty percent of all the garbage in the county is organics. Basically food waste every day that's coming in, so that's also a hundred twenty tons per day is organic waste that's coming in. How we use utilize the existing facility to expel the high issues and looking at alternative technologies. And there are all alternative technologies out there to landfilling, you know, things like state of the art incinerators at the urban city area. There's a thing called mix switch processing where bring the garbage in, you actually have people open up every bag of garbage, pull out all the things that could have been recycled or composted. Which be with the state studies that we do, you know, that like all sixty to seventy percent of what people throw away could have been diverted for the use for recycling or composting. Only processes, the only problem is those are really expensive. We looked at what a state of the art incinerator would be for Lynn County, it was a billion dollars. And we don't generate, we take in about two hundred thousand tons of garbage each year. We don't have enough garbage now in Lynn County. We don't have enough garbage in the entire state. And we got that for garbage in Minnesota to make it work. So most likely what we're gonna do is transfer. If you look at the next slide there. We already operate basically as a transfer station with the research recovery building. All the recycling that we get, we're just the middleman. So garbage will be the same thing. So if we get full in twenty thirty six, like likely to, garbage will come out of County Home Road. But instead of staying there, we're going to the other side of the research recovery building where we don't recycle. It'll get voted into open top semis and then will be taken out to a place that has room for either another landfill or a mixed waste processing facility, whichever makes the most financial sense. Just kind of what you know with the recycling. So that will get us to twenty forty four. After that, we're still going through the process of trying to find a location. There's likely gonna be probably at least two transfer stations, a transfer station south. So it'd be the beats of Cedar Rapids, all its industry, Fairfax, Paylow, Ely, most communities, and then transfer station north. So we have Center Point, Central City, Tag and Walker, all those communities as well. So I haven't narrowed down the locations yet. But this is different places, you know, we talked, had some talks with Fairfax, the spot over here, I don't know if Google wants us to be their neighbors, so I don't know if that's up, I'll possibly down the road. But the good thing about transfer station is the waste is all contained. So you'll have the truck traffic, but it's inside the building, you don't get order issues that goes out. The only problem is it's the cost. So transfer is the next cheapest option after landfilling. And if we want to do everything apples to apples that we do right now, because all of those recycling programs I was talking about, there's a cost. Most of those we covered also, we subsidize it. But if we want to do everything apples to apples, the tipping fee is that's will apply to that. When we did a study a couple of years ago in two thousand and eighteen, it was basically we would have to double what we charge now for garbage, do everything the same. So that's why as the landfill space goes down, airspace is our most valuable commodity. Typically, I'm gonna be a broken record coming back every year saying like, hey, the, you know, next year is going up to forty eight. Year after that, I'm probably gonna be here saying it's going up to fifty. Because when we do have to go to transfer, we'd wanna be here one, you're saying, hey, we're charging you forty five dollars per ton. The next year's transfer is like, hey, guess what? It's ninety dollars per ton. Nobody's prepared for that. So it's gonna grow up incrementally to be prepared for what's next. It's just because there's, at this point, there's not gonna be a landfill. Our board has said that's not an option on the table because there's literally no parcels of land left in Lynn County that you can build it with all the zoning restrictions. There's the CR sixty five, the Crop Ready sixty five that can't be straightened by landfilling. So we're limited in the options that we can't do. But in the meantime, on last slide here, you are still open for offering all these different programs. A lot of folks know that we're doing everything we can to give folks an option. They don't have to create garbage. We can get to twenty forty four at that point. In the meantime, there's a few for the city of Fairfax residents. We'll try and do it for you and try to find the best answer for how to get garbage in the future. That's me. Same questions.
Questions for Hill? So do you ever offer any seminars for citizens to, on some of your services and things that they could do to help?
Yeah, yeah. We try to go out and talk to as much as different groups as we can. So we already reached out with groups, you know, any like, you know, either youth groups, things like that, or like civic groups, road re clubs, different things, organizations. Yeah, we'd love to come out and like just make sure that people are aware of it. You know, because we still fight that battle. We gotta get our bunkos every day. You wanna do our admin, like, hey, didn't pick up my garbage. Hey, that's none of us. Everyone's still making sure to save your ashes at the city of Marion. But yeah, just letting folks know of all the different options. Yeah, we do our blast on our social media, things like that. We want to make sure folks are aware of all the options. Good. It's tough. There's no one magic bullet that you reach all two hundred and thirty people.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, we'll move on to number seven. Next, Marie Schulte is here to talk about Fairfax Higery.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. As Mary said, my name's Marie Schulte. I've been a Fairfax resident for twenty eight years. My husband and I live on Front Street. And I'm super excited to be here tonight to talk about the newly founded Library Foundation. We are in the process of getting our five oh one C three. Fairfax resident Steve House, who is an attorney, has agreed to do that process for us for free. We have a consultant, Amy Geiger, who was heavily involved in the Marion Library Expansion, and she has agreed to consult with us on an ad hoc basis. We have eleven members, I believe we should have counted, who have agreed to serve as our Board of Directors. Kathy has agreed to be a liaison for us to the library. Our goal is just to work closely with you all as you make your plans and when you're ready have decided what the goal will be for the new library, then we want to be the ones that are reaching out to the community, seeing how they're willing to help us and supported. And looking forward to it. I have been requested to serve as the president and I'm honored to do so. So I think I'll probably be speaking to you once or twice more before we have a new library in place. That's all I have.
Any questions for Marie at this point? Any questions for Marie at this point?
You said all the fees for the foundation are being done pro bono, or do you anticipate really cost the maintaining?
Um, well, we know the five oh one C three is being done pro bono. Other than that, you know, I don't know that our expenses will come as we try to make money for the library. So we'll have to take that one step at a time. Um, as you know, I believe we do have some money set aside for the library that we hope to use um as a matching fund. But as far as the tasks that we'll do, we may acquire some fees, but we've had one meeting. So we are brand new and we're figuring that.
I believe, um, if you are five oh one, you are required to file a separate tax return, that would be separate from. So I know you'll have some kind of those.
And we do have a retired um accountant on the, who has agreed to serve, I used to keep it help us with that at a minimal fee. And it does, um, you have to get to a certain dollar amount before that's um even necessary, or much more than like thirty-five dollars. Um, so it'll be minimal to begin, um, but as it, as we do acquire it, we'll probably be discussing that for the.
That'd be something I'd be interested if there's a projection, I don't anticipate one now, a prediction on. Sorry, a projection on yearly costs or, you know, obviously, the more outreach you do, that you have like revenue costs. Or I didn't know if that's something that he was a a board or foundation are looking towards, uh. Kind of give him an idea when budgeting and things like that for you guys.
Right, and like I said, we've had one meeting, so I don't have a lot of answers for you tonight, but um we'll get them, we'll get there.
You can certainly submit your minutes to be in the back, so if you wanna keep the community informed.
Okay, all right, um, this first meeting was more of a let people in to play. And so, but yeah, as we, as we begin to have true minutes, we'll definitely do that.
Okay, moving on to number eight. Um, Paul is here, representing Fairfax Alliance Club and the five K. Paul, can you, is the one using microphone?
Can I talk, Paul?
Give it a go.
Okay, so for the last seven out of eight years of USA days, on the Saturday morning, we run the five K. We start right here, we head out of cemetery and we head over to the uh bridge, crossing the creek. We do one block, we don't cross the rural tracks. And then we come back, head up cemetery at the top of the hill. And then we end by coming back to City Hall. Our volunteers will be at the main intersections. We use spray chalk on the road, which washes off. We do not use spray paint. And we're here just to inform you that we're gonna be running on the roads or ask you permission to run on roads.
And also, you'll be using City Hall, uh, this room?
Well, we'd like to. We understand that someone has already signed up for graduation later in the day and they'd like to use it early in the morning. So we would like to use the restrooms and probably right outside. However, when we do use this room, we usually add it here, everybody starts at eight, usually clean up by eight thirty or half, so.
Any questions for Paul?
Bro, don't fix it, motion to approve the uh round.
Second.
Paul in favor?
All right, fine, all right.
Thank you, Paul.
Okay, thank you.
All right, next we're gonna do an adjustment on the agenda and move an item up. Item number twenty-seven. The resolution to enter into a contract with USA Days Committee is gonna move up to now. And Polly Bowden with the Fairfax State Savings Bank is here to talk to us about that.
Um, thank you very much for letting me come to speak, not say too much. Um, we want to thank uh the council for their continued support of USA Days. Uh, and this year, you've already given us a wonderful donation and we certainly appreciate that. If anybody has any questions or anything about USA Days, let us know.
Never.
Just to better better ask Pat that.
Just to clarify, we have not made a contribution yet, not until you enter.
Well, no, Joe has um said that he would.
So the uh state, the state auditor's office is now requiring cities to enter a contract with nonprofits if you want to uh donate to their organization or event or whatever they're having. And so I got some samples, uh, some other cities and looked at some guidelines in the state auditor's office and drafted this contract. And then um Patrick looked at it, made a few tweaks, I looked at it again, made some more tweaks. And so I think it's pretty much um be acceptable to the auditors, we'll see next time we get audited. But basically, it's saying that you're going to donate up to five thousand dollars, which that's what's in the parks budget right now. And the auditor's office wants to see the purpose, and so they're gonna put it towards the uh amusement rides, the fun rides. Um, I think Patrick says a bill for that is usually about seven thousand, so we just became part of it. And uh, the auditor's office wanted to see clauses about um if they, if we give them the money, then they don't put on celebration. They give the money back and that they annually give us an accounting of how the money was spent. And so that's, and they do that anyway, they come with a financial report to us anyway. But so that's all in the formal contract that you need to enter in, in order for us to write the check as Joe passed.
But it's yet to be approved by the council.
Yeah.
Thank you. So hang on, while I see what the council chooses to do.
If there's one thing auditors hate, it's fun and happiness. So if we have to do this in long form to do it, then I motion we enter a contract with the committee to donate five thousand dollars for USA Days.
All second.
This is the resolution, so I need a roll call, Mary Ann.
Hi.
I am fine.
Hi. Thank you, they approved it.
Thank you.
Okay. So we'll bump back to item number nine on the agenda, which is a public hearing on the fiscal year twenty-four budget amendment number two. So at this time, I'll go ahead and open up a public hearing, and Cynthia, have we received any comments?
I have none.
Public hearing is open. Budget amendment number two.
Um, in your packet is the state form, but there's also a much more detailed report that goes line by line. Um, what we've either increased or decreased.
Does the council have any questions or discussions on the budget number?
This is money that's been spent or planning to be spent, it's based on the actuals.
This is just budget figures. So if it's based on actuals and I'm either, or a department head has either raised or lowered a particular line based on so far this year, so like utilities, you know, what our best guess is through um this claims and June claims. It doesn't mean that it'll all be spent or all received. Um, it also doesn't mean that one line won't go over or under. Um, what we, what's illegal to do for the state is go over the public works total, the public safety total, the culture and recreation total. Um, we take a step further, like culture and recreation is the library and the parks. So we tell the library, you can't go over your total budget, the parks can't go over their total budget, cause the library doesn't want to let the park than some of their authority and vice versa. So although the state only worries about the total, we worry about each department's total.
Any other questions or comments? If not, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and we'll move on. I consider the resolution to adopt budget amendment number two. So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please, County Master.
Aye, 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 good shot.
Aye. Thank you. Moving on to number eleven. Another uh public hearing regarding entering into a general obligation equipment acquisition lease purchase agreement. We'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Any questions from the public, Cynthia?
No, I did not receive any. Um, this is about the two leases for uh ones for skid loader, ones for mini excavator. We have been leasing them for a three-year span for quite a while. Um, so this is a renewal. Um, for new equipment, we'll get a new piece of equipment for both. And the bonding attorney, although we could have one hearing, they want two separate resolutions, one for the mini excavator, ones for the skid loader. But you can see that the cap financial um paperwork is all together, but it does list each piece of equipment separately.
Did I see now those were any two bucks by all of that? And they get two bowls, one for insurance and one with power.
We, we never take their insurance, we always put it on our insurance.
Any other?
So I was looking at the price of lease and potential purchase versus just purchasing and using their website, we're just gonna buy it. I know there's, I know it's nice having new things, but just maybe we don't know this particular with these devices that we've been leasing, but how long do they last without having major repairs? Like, we had repairs during the lease period, significantly repairs. And that's covered under the lease?
During the lease, it was covered under the warranty during the lease that we didn't have to pay for. And that's another reason why we do the lease, but the timeframe of the warranty for it on a major issue gets covered during that time and we're not responsible for it then. So like the previous excavator, the one that we had, had the main pump throughout it, I don't know how many thousands of dollars that was. And they had to come out and fix it to remove it, and it was completely covered, cause it was under warranty.
And like, didn't, then didn't we say like the skid loader is getting ready, that it needs new tracks?
Definitely, yeah.
And that's one of the reasons we wanna.
However, the excavator, this time around, we are thinking of trying to buy it out at the end. The price on this current next lease is cheaper than the one that we have now by a significant amount. So we're looking to see if we can keep the machine in a really, really good condition. And then perhaps I'll right buy it at the end of the three years and then it'd be ours to do whatever. That one gets used a little less than the skid loader, but gets used frequently. So that was one of the options we had talked about at this time for this round here. When they come back with the numbers, they said, oh, it's surprisingly cheaper than the one we got now, so you may wanna think about buying it out at the end. So it's like, oh, okay, well, let's see what the numbers are and we'll go from there. Cause I know right now, we didn't have the money in the budget to be able to buy out the one we got. So that's why I continue to just roll into the next lease and reevaluating for years. So we needed that, the last time we did the lease, at least current ones, it was the COVID, the duration, so the prices were all higher than that. So we're kind of thinking this is why, maybe why it's bad for normal, but I don't know.
And the bonding attorney has written uh the documents, so that we can purchase them at the end of the three le- uh years if we choose. That's why the, you see, a dollar amount is really high, that would be all our six lease payments plus the buyout.
So in the best history of the skid loaders, all, one that we really had, it was the okay shape. By the time the lease was off, was that very first one, but that wasn't even the track system that we wanted, because it was, the track system itself wasn't sturdy or even out there, it wasn't really for our needs. So that was a good choice to let that one go. But all the other ones, they were, then worn, and that's covered, taking out the normal wear and tear that they. That's not covered, so you can't, the tracks wearing out, we would be responsible for buying those outright. But any kind of engine failure, electronics, that stuff is all covered, parts of power drain, engine and whatnot. Running into intake and bending the arms and some. Just the general wear and tear items are usually not covered.
Any other questions for Leonard Brian? Now, I'll close the public hearing and we'll move on with, uh, I said, there's two separate resolutions. The first one is for the mini excavators, interstation, um, by imitation, and talk. Somebody please move that. Thank you. Roll call, please, Marion.
Hi.
Aye, 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 aye.
The next resolution is for the skid loader, again, I need a motion.
Motion. Second.
Roll call, please.
Aye, 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 aye.
Aye, okay. Thank you. Moving on to item number four. Several topics under the Heartland Heights pond discussion. And also, um, I was gonna mention this back on the consent agenda, but there isn't an email from a resident on these same topics. If you haven't looked at that yet, but it's back under horse problems. So Shane, wanna get started on that?
Right, on uh, item A, design changes to the cover. So last month's we, wanna pull up the plan sheet, said the under A.
Just that first one? Now?
Last month, you recall Shane inquired if uh they could change that, it was originally designed as a four foot high end toxic cover. If we did, Quinn donated twenty fifty-six, so their engineer looked at the design and uh and get it done, got the Quinn forty-eight color to two forty-eight color, forty-eight inch diameter, maybe the time we had dollars. Uh, it's actually cheaper. And uh, the design statement is, is pretty much the exact same thing, so. Um, so I don't count, I have any concerns or questions with that change. Not if I want a motion to show that you're in support of it and you're okay with that on what you say. Logically, it's no different, so it's cheaper for the all of us. Great.
So do you have any other questions on, um, for Shane or the developers on that change? If not, then yeah, let's have a motion.
Motion. Second.
Paul in favor?
Aye, aye.
Bye, thank you.
All right, we have motion A, B, C, D.
Oh, that was A. Yes.
So on B, there is, remember last month, we also had exceptions, so we met with the developers after council reading, read through them. Um, there ended up being three design exceptions. A, B, C, and E. I'm not gonna read through everything that's in the council packet. Um, I'm gonna figure out what, what they are, A is on the west side of the pond. There's a proposed temporary basin with a temporary outlet for the land to work, and we hear that. Staff talked about it with developers, and it's much issue with removing that. Item B is revement on the east side of pond that backs up for lots. Um, that's very well already vegetated, vegetation, I'm gonna think to establish. Uh, I think the general feedback from the staff was that it's probably best to leave that as is. And then C with revement on the top of the uh term between water quality basis one and the creek at the northeast corner of the pond. And the creek at the northeast corner of the pond personal. Definitely didn't seem necessary at all since there is still, we just wanted to let him know. So the general staff, in what was, you know, there's no major concern to those design exceptions.
So why was the revement on there to begin with? Why take it off?
On B or C? On B. So B, I think there's concern with, you know, very large storm events that that embankment promoted. And some erosion issues. Which is possible, but I think the concern is if you discard it now, there's a very good stand vegetation and it's had a pretty decent slope. It's not promoted in, it's sloped back at a, I don't know what slope it is, three to ones.
Third or, it's probably four to one.
Yeah, so it's a pretty gradual slope. So it's, it's not a high risk to, for real, it could, but.
So the revement was put in there because of these.
Well, yeah, that the concern of potential erosion on that. The other revement. There's no real justification for that. Come on, C, the design exception, C.
This is the one in the southeast corner is our C.
B is on the southeast corner.
C is on the southeast corner.
Between, it's on the top of the embankment between waterfall base and. It's showing in that exhibit. If you go to the exhibit under that, B, there should be a separate. So A is on the west side, right there. Then B is on the southeast along the stream embankment that backs up the lots. And then C is up there between water quality basin and mystery.
So I read something about a citizen in his backyard, there are some erosions. Some issues, is that in the area of B or is that?
It's, he ran the one, the one, the letter.
Yeah.
So that's, that does not even, even erosion per se, that just needs to be fixed or, I don't know the details of that.
If there are erosion there, it should be addressed before the city access, yeah.
Well, I think that erosion has always been, to be honest, that creek has slumped up since before they started.
When is that, that one spot that we were talking about that?
I'm not sure if that's the same line or not, but there was.
There's one spot up there, Tom, that we, when we walk, it does need like one bucket or un-receded. Oh, that's all we're, okay. I don't know if that's what they're talking about, but we do, we are aware of that one spot. I was thinking it was a larger area.
And I'm not sure if that's it's alive or the one before.
Yeah, and that I, I don't know, Tom, but that's there, we are aware of one spot. Okay, you say a five in a bucket, then okay. Like a one skid loader bucket. All right, well, still really. I thought we were talking about. The whole area. That's probably the best stand of grass.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, the only place that's good grass. That's why we're a little afraid to tear it up to get other stuff in there. You probably got three more problem. Do we let them not?
Any other questions on item B? Fourteen B.
Should I have a motion if the council?
Right, yeah, but no further questions. Please motion to set that, those design. Second. Did I hear a second? I'm sorry. Thank you.
Real quick before we move on, Dave, cause it's somewhat related to the email. Probably not needed, but is there actually a lot of four wood usage up there? I would like to think it's not required for the sign up or there's no. For a while.
We have, we have a sign up that just said, please no motor vehicles out or just see if this is, I think it's wild seating or. Now, now again, signs work perfectly. That's why, that's why gun free zones work so well. But I was just curious, at least a sign up.
Okay. Moving on to item.
Yeah, so let's skip over C and go to D and come back to C.
Okay, so we're skipping down to D, developer's request for Green Mountain City for the pedestrian bridge.
So Shane, I'm gonna have you clarify what your request is.
So we need to get this, they're talking about five months right now for this bridge if we order it. So if we order it here, if we get approval this month, we can get it ordered now. And we can get this bridge set this year yet. We push it out any longer, we're probably looking at next year. So I know it was in the budget that was approved for money for this. So we, we had talked about an agreement. I didn't really need an agreement. I just need something. So we put it on. We just put on a separate estimate, which I had included on my sent you how that would not.
It's in an email?
So, well, it was the emails that went back and forth yesterday. So then, you know, I reviewed through stuff. So if you look in your stuff I put in your desk, there's one that says trail and then there's another one, I think.
I think the three fat costs I had was a hundred and seventy one thousand dollars.
Pedestrian bridge.
That's full cost, not fifty percent participation. That's full, everything I have on that is always at a hundred percent full cost, yes.
So yeah, so the city, the, the pedestrian bridge. The total cost and then, so I'm copying that I handed out tonight for you to look at. You know, based on Shane's estimate is five hundred eighty nine thousand, five hundred and three dollars and seventy five cents. So that's the same number that they provided back in January when we were like. So, you know, the agreement is fifty percent. The city's participation cost matters. Just give me a chance. Of the developer's boss. So, you know, based on that number, and I got the numbers worked out there, you know, it's two hundred ninety five thousand. One five percent, you can see it's about fourteen thousand, seven hundred. So that's about three hundred and nine thousand, five hundred and thirty six bucks. Budgeting, so we should have money set aside. We had three hundred and ten thousand dollars construction and we had fifty thousand for engineering admin. We don't know whether to tear it out there while the back piles, things like that. So things sent you back in about long, I think we have a total of three hundred and sixty thousand in the budget.
And fifty twenty five.
Yes, would be affected June, July first.
And we have team services included in that number or for variance. So there wouldn't be additional cost to that.
So, you know, just so we're clear, Cindy, you, you know, I appreciate your feedback on this. What, how this works then is developers put in their cost. So I assume this is an estimate. Some of these numbers are probably pretty tight, but I assume they have some.
These are all firm numbers now. Yeah, yeah. The only thing that I heard is that bearing pressure on the age piles.
I just don't like with the four hundred thousand.
So that would be. Set the bridge, all, you know, the crane building, crane pads, it just everything goes along with, with the bridge there. There's concrete ball that the.
Yeah, I gotta do the back we've done.
Yeah.
I mean, I know it's gosh, you said, you know, yesterday it was over seventy.
Or the, just the bridge itself.
So what all works is then. They'll construct it, they'll send all of their invoices that they have for the project and then the city.
After you reveal it, just like a pay app.
Yeah.
Cynthia, refresh my memory. It's on this D I P list and so that's part of the bond.
It's in the budget. And in capital projects, I believe. It's not part of the new bond. I think we're using bond funds on.
That's why I wanted, needed my memory refreshed on.
So city's participation approximately three hundred and nine thousand.
Well, plus engineering.
Yeah, I mean, we'll have time off there checking. I mean, the city can do as much as they want, but I'm sure hopefully I'll check some time. And I assume the bridge required, it's why I.
So if these are firm numbers, we shouldn't have really have much for contingency. You have like five percent on here. We shouldn't really need that.
The only thing, Mary Ann, is the age piles have to hit certain bearing pressure that we had.
So they might have to go down.
It, they should be very close because they drilled all the way to bottom where we, where we can hit bearing pressure. And then we overestimated a little bit. So we should be real close. Slim chance of that would change, yes.
And then the city engineering and admin, what's the fifty, the fifty thousand, what, what is that?
That's just like our time and like I said, if we had to get a terracotta and there to.
Which you won't need terracotta because he's already got team services, he said.
Yeah.
So when you figure the fifty then Shane, are you using a percentage of the total?
That's just a, that was just a high number. That should be, because we didn't know what it would take to have a, you know, geotech in there.
So that number should come down.
So question on. The exceptions that had bravery and C. Not having to prevent and help and make changes. There's. How much savings is there in that not having to? Not having to. With what we just approved. What I'm, what I'm getting at is you're asking for a change. By A, B, and C, which we said yes for some savings, not having to do that specifically, so you're ready. It could be, not have this understanding, so I'm sorry, I wasn't. So there's savings there. I understand what you're saying. Is it fair to say we split some of that? So the savings that were on there, well, we are having, we were having major erosion issues with water seeping out of the north side of the pond. So what I agree to with Dan and the city staff was we would cover all the costs. We put a tile all the way around that north side of the pond with outlets. We agreed to shave all that to eliminate all that erosion. That way you guys don't have problems in the future. So with the savings on our end, we covered the cost and that's our, we are installed that to get it taken care of immediately. Do you understand what I'm saying? And I don't know the details what out up there, but there's some savings that we just had here. Maybe it's, there's design changes. To offset that, is there a way to offset that? Well, that's, that's what I'm saying. We put, we did all that extra work on the other side to offset those costs. That does offset that cost. I didn't run numbers. It was fairly pricey to get all that in around. You tell me Shane, your past experiences, that are fair. Yeah, as far as making changes to the design, we wanna be fair to you guys, Shane, obviously. But obviously fair to Fairfax as well, if there's sessions. But if it's what you're saying Shane, and that's what I mean on you as well, if that comes out to be a lot, then I'm okay with that. But that's correct. That, that was the discussion we had in our meeting after, that meeting we have after this last city council meeting. Is that since we would have saving, we would cover the cost of doing all that. Oh, at the meeting in April or just earlier? The meeting we had right after the last city council meeting.
And it was. In that meeting, but yeah, the tile is a pretty decent. Geography span. Out there, the, the lake.
Oh, I saw that number. That's what you're talking about. It's graded, it's not received. I didn't wait until it's, you're, I, I don't want.
Oh, Shane, what kind of motion are we looking for here? We don't have an agreement in front of us. Are we just looking at the exhibit?
He just wants the cities going at.
October, no, October, November is what they told him. And they're not gonna do the pump up events until right before the church gets there because we don't wanna have old charges for trains.
And just wanna make sure. Whether it was bad or after the.
I don't have any concern about. So you don't have. Concerned. If we, if we get an order tomorrow, I, I have no concern with it installed here.
Anyway, since we don't know what, what these numbers are gonna land.
I mean, if you look at the agreement also that it's twenty sixteen. There wasn't a cap or anything. On stuff like that. So the sewage is so one of forty some thousand since I got the boat here to reveal. How much is fire truck though in here? More than that. So on that note.
So do you wanna, do you wanna do not to exceed number just?
We recently, we never said not to exceed. That's one of eight years ago. I don't see any.
I just like based on what the credit says, yeah. I think so, looking at what they're saying, that they're gonna need that. Cause we should come in that hopefully the contingency should be less. We shouldn't, Shane had stuff for in like terracotta in there that shouldn't. So his number fifty should come down substantially too. So it should be less. Cynthia, writing things down on your motion or?
I.
No, I'm not. I mean, are you just gonna give him the assurance that it's in the budget and you've already got the development agreement? I, I guess I'm struggling with.
You don't want the price to go up if we already bridge, kinda have to use them.
Even here, Marion, you just weren't concerned is. You want a dollar amount, there's a percentage. Are you suggesting that if it exceeds dollar X, it has to come back in the council rule? I don't know if that's really. Faith that we tell them to do.
I would just say based on these numbers, it shouldn't be more than this.
You said that's a hard.
Fifty percent not to exceed.
Pretty, like I said, the age piles are the big question, but we have more or less, but you know what instructions like it. You don't, underground stuff, you don't know a hundred percent certainly.
And that's gonna be the same thing when you do the West Cemetery. Right, the piles, you know, that's why you do the soil orange. They have a good idea, but you actually.
So they have like, they have the, they have that cost in here twice, Shane included it and Shane. So that's what I'm saying, if we just go ahead and approve the not to exceed the three sixty, we should be theoretically, we should be okay. Unless they did some really crazy thing and then.
And I guess my point is you already have three sixty in your budget. You've already improved that budget line. Yeah, and so really, if something happens, he's over that. He's gonna have to come here because you got.
So let's just, I'll just move to approve not to exceed the three sixty and then we could just see where we landed if we have thirty. Well, later we do. Does that work? You second?
Second.
On favor. All right, who do you wanna go next Shane?
So the next one is the trail. Also in there D.
Oh. Didn't see that, must've had an agenda topic.
No.
So if you look in that act that I had with the trailer. The. We talked about your budgeting for around like five, that we didn't trail up to about station fifty five hundred, so it's not the whole length of the trail. This, we don't know exactly where the sewer is gonna go and the main concern is to get access. All portions of the partial ones that's dedicated. So if you look in that act as well. The, based on the agreement between developers and the city. City's responsibility is to. Reimburse the developer to one hundred percent of the trail, any method they themselves. So on that first sheet, that's what I've got highlighted in pink or the agenda. So that'd be the city's responsibility and then doing the math on that, that would be about. Down at the bottom of that sheet, about seventeen thousand nine hundred four inch median show base. About ninety five thousand. Four hundred for the six inch page trail for about a hundred thirteen thousand. And if I were saying you see it there, it's about a hundred and eighteen thousand. We got to see proof of the budget. Around white three five for a hundred and twenty five thousand, so. She and Bruce submitted, you know, the sheet playing yesterday afternoon, it includes other things. We're constructing the trail. That's the whole length of the trail. So the total number is two hundred twenty three thousand six thousand nine. So I don't know what they want. You made version below the decimal item or not? That's not part of the initial.
I'm not watching where you get twenty. Where's that number at?
Sorry.
Said twenty two thousand, where you have.
Do you have this sheet here that says fail on?
Yeah.
Okay. So you see the two line items, number seven seventy and seven eighty.
Okay, veteran.
That's the sidewalk surface, four inch, six inch P C C trail. So that's what the city for the current agreement, based on the. Back when. The city's agreement is to reverse the development of that portion of the trail. Yes, right. Yeah, do the math on that because we'll only be a little bit less than fifteen hundred feet. Do that math, it goes one hundred thirteen thousand, five hundred contingency, then run it up to one hundred twenty five thousand.
Cynthia.
Constructing that as rail.
But I was gonna ask Cynthia, per call wise, since the trail is not on the agenda, Cynthia, do we need to ask the council? Permission to go ahead and add that as a sub point B or something under this item?
Well, as long as everyone knows what you're discussing, because fourteen is just discussion of possible motion concerning heart and tight pond topics. It doesn't, you know, yes, you've got a listed, but it doesn't.
Okay.
They could discuss anything that they want about.
We want to discuss this or not. And Shane originally asked for the, the bridge to be on there. And then they submitted both of these cost estimates.
Yeah, so it didn't get put on the agenda of this trail discussion. And Tom, the other amount he's talking about, it's here.
Two twenty three. Oh, there, all right.
Yeah, so I think Shane's asking, are we just gonna pay for the two lines that we had previously agreed or what about the other? Did that right?
What is the yellow highlight?
That's just the additional items that they have for constructing the trail. So if you look at the sheets behind that, Tom.
The channel, I think. That's just.
That's just showing the entire. Shane, that actually, Brandon, is you're correct, the purple item, okay?
Yes, we're not asking the city to pay for the other items. I, I showed that so we used to. So that's our, our actual cost for doing, but yes, our agreement only showed the two items.
So a hundred and seventy seven thousand approximately.
Well, we, when we did this estimate, we included the whole trail. Shane had a note here stopping it, station one fifty five, we shortened up our.
And so the new estimate's one hundred and nineteen and we have a hundred and twenty five in our budget.
This is where we changed where the, how far that trail is gonna go. Did we try to, and how far past?
That's the last sheet that I get. If you look at that, you filled it out. It's highlighted in the orange. The part that's highlighted would be the else being red. And the part that's highlighted in yellow or orange would be the approximate trail portion.
When you said Shane earlier, you're starting, we stopped at that point because we don't know if the sewers are gonna come and adapt with reference. Yes. Well, this really part is true. It's just any changes because of how far up the trail, which changes to the tracks.
Yeah.
What kind of motion are we looking for here Shane?
I don't think we are with Frank.
Just for information only? Got it. Any more questions on that?
So I guess the only thing I would like to see is make sure this was okay with you guys. That way I can get both locked in. For the painting, so we don't have to worry about it going up here.
So we also.
And we might, we might do a little, a little, most of it, the best option for that's just a matter of.
That was gonna be my question. Are you gonna point to something where it is totally done or I think you just. Build up as close as possible. And then see if we can finish it off once the bridge.
Because the only thing we're gonna have on the one side is one train pack, so we'll have a train on each side of that bridge.
So do we want to go ahead and just do something? So it's, we have record of it with a not to exceed total. So we can, so it's documented.
You want to do the similar motion to bridge, you know, X amount.
And like to the same thing with this. Yeah. Right.
Sure that.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Around one twenty five.
One twenty five, one twenty, not to exceed, just so we have a cushion there, yeah. So we're gonna, we're going to make a motion to approve that one twenty five. You know, subject to whatever this point. So.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor? Thank you.
I need to go back to see. I also have a, you know, for that. The chain of Bruce requested. The city participate in the bonding for the pre engineered trail bridge. Eleven inch trail and then twin forty inch overs in participation and then a great inch overs. Which is all additional well. Pre engineered trail bridge, the city agreed to fifty percent. So to be in the bonding. It makes sense that the city would make fifty percent of bonding. Part of that agreement. So they have the five eighty nine, five ninety three, seventy five for the trail bridge. And then they have a two year rate that's bond at sixteen thousand two thirteen. And a four year bond in nineteen thousand one sixty two. That means for the full price for the city agreement. Think that, you know, half of that bonding cost would be part of that fifty percent participation city.
So the question, the other question is for that bridge. Is it, and Shane, is the bond necessary for the bridge?
Does it come with any kind of a warranty?
We did ask that question.
Right?
I don't even, your body company even. I doubt it. They used the one seventy one, right, to cover that, but I mean, you check out that, so I think that would.
Was there a, was there one on the bridge that we put on over the creek? I don't remember there being one on that.
I thought there was a warranty on that and it's been.
I don't remember. Long time. I just can't imagine with it structurally that it would fall apart.
I still know.
Two years.
On the grid. And that would take a hundred and seventy one thousand dollars right there. Is it normal, Shane, there for the city to participate in bonding on something like this? It's not, but I mean. In my mind, the way I look at this one is the city breach may have the cost. That is a cost to go. To the bridge.
So if the city's paying, just trying to put this in a different term, if the city's doing a project and they're paying for the project. Your bond cost is going to be included in that price. So the city would pay for the entire one. And the initial price, it would just be included into the. All the numbers we gave, we did direct pricing because we didn't anticipate bonding. So the bonds were never included in the price.
Yeah, and now with development, anything that the city, that the developer dedicate to the city, like the streets. The sewers and stuff like that, they can provide a bond. There's no logic to see. So this is part of the private development. So whatever they're dedicating to the city, all pedestrian bridge, the trail, it will be dedicated to the city, the city will be responsible. At meeting it after it's accepted. So then typically the city requires a bond. On this. And where I look at the pedestrian bridge, the city's paying for fifty percent of it, as agreed, paid fifty percent of the bridge cost. And I can see, you know, justification that the city would be. You don't have to, but it's not something you did for that to be done. And I would argue for the trail. You know, that's not part of. The city just reimbursing for providing the bond, it was not specifically called out for. We wanted the pedestrian bridge. It was just the city participated in the person that caused.
And Marion, you can vouch for me here. I mean, in a bid, you put your bond in the cost. We did, we excluded.
It would be, it's like a bet part of these original bits. Yeah. I just can't see where we even need to do it on the bridge, honestly. If it fails in two years, holy crap, we're in big trouble anyway. And the same thing almost with the concrete. I honestly, I mean. Brian would probably tell you that. It should last more than two years, like even the streets. We had, what, didn't we have a four year on some of those and? Problem is if it's gonna fall apart, it's gonna fall apart outside of the maintenance bond. So it's kind of irrelevant.
But the point of the maintenance bond, ownership. The only concern I have typically with the pavement is if it gets falling on the surface, for some reason that trail is installed and it. Brian, you know, like if that's surface fault, you've got fifteen hundred foot of falling, you know, trail that's fallen. But that's, that's the trail. The bridge is a different topic. But the bridge. I don't think you'd bond for that construction. The rest of the working ship could be an issue that you may want to have bonded.
So you lay some in, is it your guys or do you contract, subcontract? That'll be Agelson that's gonna do it.
This is neither.
In the trail?
You say that, I didn't know. I think for stuff that's kind of crazy.
The bridge doesn't seem to make any sense to me just because.
And the trail either really, I mean.
Yeah, and again, the city typically requires bond for anything that's dedicated to the city. That's the end. So it's whether or not you want to require it first, number, then number two is if you want to participate. And then if so, how much?
But Marion, to what you said earlier, the bonding is usually included in the cost to start with, what is. It was just like a state, how much.
And yeah, I guess when we went into this, we didn't, we were just putting part costs together on our budgets and bonding was never even discussed, so.
Well, the thing is, is like, this is their development. They don't want it to look like crap either, you know, because that's, they gotta sell houses. Well. That, I mean, to a point, but I mean, that's, I just don't know.
I mean, one thing you can consider too, especially for the trail is just have a condition when you improve the lives on that, the developer. Three years or two years, whatever you want. You come back and repair it and you have just, you know, that's costing relationship. But then that's a lot of risk to them if. The entire trail is false and. You don't have a bond that covered. Now typically, correctly about one. Contractor doesn't work. And there is, you know, if you got second payment, roadway, sidewalk, your trail, you got a few areas that need to be replaced. Contractor's gonna come back and replace them. They're not gonna let you.
We're never gonna let it go back to a bond. You're not gonna get a bond again, so.
So typically the contractor's gonna deal with that and not like, well, with the bond.
That's correct.
You know, so you got, you're going to sign up and buy a couple panels. That's one thing where my concern would be with the trail, if it gets falling in the entire.
Do you have any solutions? I'm just trying, I, I don't think we need to do anything with the bridge, maybe off, I think that's.
If you want to be covered on that, you're gonna notice it's falling two years for the trail itself. And I would just do like a two year on, on the trail.
Because if it's gonna happen, it's gonna happen right away, right? Yeah, I would agree with that.
Is that cost for the whole trail or just the amount of trail we're putting in?
That's just for the entire trail. It's based, it's a percentage of cost. So if you only do the pavement cost and we don't have bond the entire. Project, it's, it's less than that, I think.
Yeah, it's, is the bridge, what's the bridge? Stopped it out.
Steel with a concrete that, with a concrete there, so there.
So it should be indestructible.
It looks like.
Especially brand new.
Yeah, it looks.
It looks just like a. But naturally we put up pylons to prevent those damn off road errors coming.
Yeah, so I don't think we need, definitely the bridge is out. If, if, if we're just gonna do the trail, then basically I think again, just the concrete. And I would say let's just do a two year.
Is it gonna do your about twenty six, twenty two, twenty six, twenty three?
What about the culvert though? That's in there too.
That's another topic.
Do we need to do the culvert again? It's just a big piece of concrete. Let somebody runs into it, but.
Well, you also have to discuss participation in culvert.
All right, well, let's, let's get these two things in first.
Skip bridge, two years.
Concrete on.
Concrete for that. That, that's what I would suggest, yeah.
City's gonna pay for that or not?
Well, we did say we were gonna pay for the entirety of the trail in our, didn't we, in the twenty sixteen.
And city was reimbursing for the cost of the paved trail and cost of the manor stuff.
So we got the motion, second now, chat.
We haven't decided if we're paying all of it or something.
Okay.
It's normally written in. Written in to start and it just wasn't put in to start. We would have paid all of it if we get, right? So I need to go back and say maybe fifty percent or. Right, I mean, how do you?
The bond portion's pretty small in that section. We're just talking about concrete, so.
You're taking all of it and then.
I think that's what we agreed to basically.
So what would that amount be?
Well, based on, based on, and my numbers are just approximate, but based on about fifteen hundred linear feet, if you did a two year bond, it'd just become, it'd be around twenty six hundred, twenty three dollars.
That's not what's.
I think that was the original whole project.
That was the original whole project, yeah.
So it was fourteen nine forty five. That's a lot less.
Yeah, well.
That number, that was when they had to pull by eighty box culvert in there and a bunch of other costs.
So what I have so far is to not require a bond for the bridge. And yes, to have a two year bond for the trail concrete with the city paying. So what I have so far is to not require a bond for the bridge, and yes, to have a two-year bond for the trail concrete with the city paying approximately cost of twenty-six fifty.
What's the thirty-four, thirty-seven? Yeah, that's right.
That was what, not, that was what included your annual surveys and the other word, that was.
Doing a motion for that?
Yeah, yeah.
Second.
By me.
All in my favor.
Hi.
Hi, hi.
So I'm, so I'm thinking that the city's paying, will be reimbursing for the two-year bond on the payment loan.
Yes, for approximately twenty-six fifty.
So then on the forty-eight inch culvert, they're asking the city to participate fifty percent of that. And then also asking for a bond on that. I think that bond is actually on a hundred percent, so.
What was the cost of the regular? Four foot, one culvert compared to two?
Three, three hundred and some thousand.
So there's a savings there of a hundred and thirty-nine fifty thousand.
So. Again, there's nothing in the, in the city, an old agreement participating in that originally. Sheena Bruce's request is based on the fact that it's, you know, necessary because of the trail. He did make a verbal request back in December, council discussed, you know, participating. In the four, four by eight foot in January, February, as we've been budgeting, council decided at that time not to spend four by eight. So now, the only thing that's changed is that we went by twenty-eight install. So some of you, well, maybe Mary Ann, Jordan, she went back and the preliminary flat review, you just approved it. The original preliminary flat had a trail on the east side and along the southwest side. And the developers were supposed to participate fifty percent on the trail on the east side. And then, but the city wanted the trail to loop, so then the city was gonna reimburse a hundred percent of the pavement and. And subgrade along the south and west side. So. The city, you know. Maintained all that cost, the developers, you know. Since the east trail was removed and everybody's pulling their plastic. The developers had some cost savings that fell along, and didn't have any additional cost savings in the trail, so. So the city's already, you know, taken on some additional costs with that trail. Just keep that in mind.
We've also incurred a ton of cost for the original intention based, and that was at the city's.
That was also part of the planning. I'm just, it's their decision, I'm just making aware of everything that's part of this.
Shane, is it fair that, to say that? When we agree to change on the culvert's going to two to save. Close to half that. You guys take, you guys do the maintenance bond, either two or four, I don't know which, but I guess it's unfair to want me to suggest two, but let me take that.
That we would cover that, I, yeah, I do, I.
Yeah. I'm not gonna ask for four because they're not asking for two on the trail on the concrete, but. Unless, I don't know what your guys' thoughts are on that, but.
So you were saying they, uh, you just have participation and they.
No, they do a hundred percent participation on the bond.
That's a nice, oh, sorry. Yeah, a hundred percent that on the bond. Half on the culvert, not, not the culvert, the. Two forty-eights.
So, so a couple things, I mean, I don't, you guys are looking at the sheet. And I don't know exactly what their request is, so we should compare on that, so I've got different, I might, I haven't highlighted there, so. The trail, or I'm sorry, passing trails. The, uh, the two forty-eight inch storm sewers. They've got two hundred and fifty-six linear feet, the actual forty-eight inch diameter, that'd be two twenty-four, the total length, including third end sections, one hundred and twenty-eight feet. So you pull up third end sections, which are each eight feet, gives you two hundred and twenty-four linear feet. All by that by the three oh three seventy-five is sixty-eight thousand forty, and then you've got the third end sections and erosion stone. So those items that are highlighted and painted with dent, those are the actual storm culvert items.
And that's what, that's what I'm asking, I'm not asking for the whole thing, then I'm asking for just that portion.
Yeah, so that total number is, is down on the bottom, that's sixty-eight thousand, the twenty-two thousand, the ten thousand, adds up to ninety-nine thousand seven hundred eighty dollars, bucks, nothing. So just clarifying, you know, the other stuff is radiating for the east-west ditch, and I think the overflow swell. So that would be the quest, the change that made would be for that probably a hundred thousand dollar participation.
Was that in the original?
That's not, that's an additional request.
And it's not in your fiscal twenty-five budget?
Not in our budget, that's, it's gonna be my question, is we don't have that budgeted.
So I'm trying to wrap my head around it, because we want to, okay, we're okay with this culvert. That created these extra costs in Magenta.
No. The original, the original plans had a four-foot by eight-foot box culvert. And Shane said that they installed a lot cheaper, they should have individual circular pipes, that forty-eight inch diameter or smaller, so then there's, you know, show that to be done.
Sure.
It works, so there's cost savings. From the original plan that was approved with four-foot by eight-foot box.
So what we asked for back in December was participation on that box culvert, but I had made the comment, I think we can do it for half the cost of that. If we can do. Revised plans. Value of the area. And then we got the press now down to that hundred thousand for just the pipe instead of three hundred. So now we're instead of asking for hundred and fifty thousand participation, we're asking fifty.
So this is the total, you want half of this?
Yeah. They roughly want, now depending on the nature, fifty-two, five, if you want to round it up. You said that's not currently a budgeted fifty-two five?
Correct.
And is, so we have to do a budget amendment on any pre-existing or leftover. Geo bonds that are.
I'd have to look at the person.
What the purpose of that, without the purpose of any leftover funds from any previous geo bonds.
And we might have money left over depending on where everything comes in at two a little bit.
Bridge.
Yeah.
So we went down to two, because it went down to two, it caused another hundred thousand dollar extra. You're going the wrong way.
So, so, so Tom, they originally had a bid to do a huge box, like a big square box culvert. And it was gonna be three hundred thousand dollars. And then he came back and said, I can value engineer putting in two smaller round pipes. For a fraction of the cost, so he, he ended up saving two-thirds of the cost, he's doing it for a hundred as opposed to three, so. Worst, we're talking, this is what the cost was, now it's down to here, but we still need to pay for our fifty percent of whatever this is. It wasn't.
We didn't agree to that.
We didn't agree to that, but this, um, originally wasn't part of. They ended up putting it in somewhere where we weren't anticipating.
Well, it was part of it, Mary Ann, but it's one thing that I did not see on the plans, and the only reasons box culvert goes in is to support that trail. If that trail wasn't going around there, which cities, city wanted the trail and test, or they paid for this, this is why I'm not seeing.
Cause you know, that journey is not going anywhere.
We would just, it'd just be a dead shrub under there, we wouldn't need, there would be nobody for it.
There is, they, with the changes of the preliminary flat, they are saving, now they're not saving in the next couple of years, long term, but there's also a bunch of storm sewer in the original preliminary flat. That have been forty-eight inch diameter or bigger, that they will not have to put in, so they will see savings from twenty-three cost in the future along that rated board, so.
So basically Tom was asking for is. We'd have one assertive, what's the original process and what they found in the original blocks, so we would go from one fifty to fifty if we decided to participate in it. If we did decide to participate, fifty, fifty-two, five, whatever. We first have to check and see if we have any geo leftover that fits that purpose, and if not. Then we'd have to see if there were savings in, and we're talking about fifty thousand dollars, that's your cost, we possibly need to bring up here, you'll need that now, right? So that would possibly be cost savings to help pay for that fifty thousand dollars request.
Just a, but, but so. Back last year, the three hundred thousand dollars was fifty-fifty?
So. In December, Shane asked for participation during the budgeting process, we went through the same discussion, and then council decided they did not want to split it at that. So it's the same conversation, it's just the cost went from three hundred thousand, you put in fifty-fifty, now a hundred thousand.
Overall.
It's splitting that fifty-fifty, what is not in the development agreement?
No, it's never been agreed, the council's never agreed to participate in this project, so this would be additional. Money that has not been budgeted, has not been accounted for, and you.
And you also mentioned there's been some other savings that they have, had, because of, that's what you talked about.
Shane mentioned that, Shane mentioned that the original preliminary flat, they weren't, we didn't have a culvert of its trail. Well, then when they revised it. They, there's a bunch of storm sewer to the west, and I got a copy in this document, it shows, so they, they have culverts now under the trail. But they have a bunch of storm sewer to the west, they might have to put in.
Way this is going, I might not even be alive by the time we get to that side of the track, the bridge has gotta go in with Beverly Road and, and you're talking forty years for it to get.
I mean, I'll be alive. I guess I would, I'm gonna, like, the savings, there's savings from the developer and.
There's savings from a mile down the road, but no one knows when or if that's even gonna develop.
We need a decision tonight on that part, Shane.
So I don't know what, what's.
No, I mean, I, I would ask, do we? Start going, Shane. Do we need a decision tonight? No, uh, we, we won't put this in until. We have no wants yet before we'd start doing this.
It sounds like we need to look at our budget considerations and see.
I, I, I'm leaning towards participating in, especially if we're cutting down, A, on the original participation cost, and then another savings. In the engineering side of things with the bridge, but I think step one is having Cynthia look over our remaining geo funds to see if any of that will be this purpose.
So I think we're, what, what we're saying is we're gonna wait on this and try to figure some stuff out first.
Is there anything else up on that pond other than pulling off on this, or anything else is all signed, sealed, and we can finish it off and be done with it, or is?
Well, E is other punch lists.
Yeah, that's coming up, I guess, no other major issues, right?
We're ready to go on to E then? Punch list item?
Yep, so E, I think is, uh, punch list items. So it's been kind of the latest punch list items and where they stand. Number one is, when we just talked about those twin forty-eight inch culverts that you put in. Um, the ditch graded and the, uh, and the overflow swell needs to be constructed. So the timing of that needs to be figured out. I guess if there's no decision on participation, they can still go in, it's just whether or not the city would be reimbursed for it.
So I guess with, with that one right there, that would just be, as soon as we have an answer, we'll get that put in, so.
Does it, I guess my question is, is there a reason to ask to wait? Gotta go in whether or not the city participates or not, right? My only question is, with it, is from a timing, I'm just starting, I can get stuff reseeded or not? Been established?
So the council needs to say whether we can just move forward.
Well, I, I think, I think hopefully, I don't know if these, you know, Shane and Bruce want. Um, to push back the. The date that the city's gonna, with all building permits, I think it's June thirtieth or not, but I think they need to begin most or not all these punch list items addressed. Before then. Obviously the trail and bridge, you know, had, after the fact, which wouldn't need to happen, but. I think that's the conversation is out of these, these punch list items. You know, what do we expect them, see them getting to be here in the next six weeks? Feel comfortable that, yeah, but people know they're not. That's like your night house, this has been over four years now, yeah, it was, it was on February fourteenth, twenty twenty. So. Yeah, it's, it's looking a lot better, they've done, they worked on this, bring, they last fall, this thing, there are still some things that, and a lot of them can get done very quick. There's a couple that, that probably would be one question.
Cynthia, can we put that and join on the next agenda meeting? About the participation of the. Landing wall, who can find?
Oh, yeah, I assumed it was gonna be, if I listened to it, but what Shane is saying is they, timing wise, they should probably go ahead and put it in, they have to put it in whether we participate or not. And to avoid not being able to issue building permits.
Oh, yeah. I think at this point, we need to get every building permit we can take, so if there's something Shane wicks that you absolutely need to have done for permits. I think we have till the end of June, so we'll need to decide that for sure by next, have it done by the end of next month.
Or the end of next month, I just don't want, with the culvert, again, most of these things are little touch-up things, I just don't want, cause part of the culvert is they're gonna have to grade the east-west ditch. They're gonna grade the overflow swell downstream of, of the inlet of the culvert. So they're gonna tear up two or three acres area, I'm not sure what it is, I just don't want them to do that, and then you can't get grass established and you're fighting erosion, so that's my only concern with that one. You know, if that's, but at that point, it doesn't make sense to do that. And wait till, do it first August, but you. And then get seed in.
We're gonna grade the seal around the trail and bridge and everything too, right, when the ball.
Now probably be some catch-up stuff and then. Seed in the spring next year, it's done, I feel in November.
I think this has been said, and it's been out there since twenty-twenty, right, and we're coming down to the end of June, but. It's done sooner than later, I guess.
Lynn and Chris, do you have any feedback on turn it up? Now we're waiting to turn it up.
If you're getting, no, I couldn't get her seen in here. Well, you know, ideally, I wish that culvert was in before they seeded, but it isn't.
Seeding's starting to look really good, starting to come on really good, we've got a wet spring, ideal conditions, we got it in at a good time. You hate to see that get torn up right away, but those culverts need to be in. As far as the trail, the trail, the top of that term, you're getting up those side slopes that were eroding into the pond so bad. Uh, that was my biggest concern last fall, was that real erosion on those side slopes around the pond, cause that dirt was going into the pond, there's no way to get it out once it's in there. They've really done a good job, I thought seeding, the most part of there, unfortunately, went in and put the title in right after we seeded, so. You know, again, if we could get these things in, fall, get them in, get it seeded, and then leave it alone. And let that seed do its thing, that grass take over and then roots established. But then when long wins in spring. The, the culvert needs a.
We'll just go ahead and put it in. We'll just go ahead and put it in, asking in good faith then the city. Talking about decisions, so, you know, I, I feel like I'm very funding issues. I mean, I, and when I say that, I don't get, I'm sorry, couldn't find it. Your S O L, I think more like just doing. Our diligence finding. That money, if that's the council's preferred direction, that's just my opinion right now. Some people I've spoken upon.
I would agree with you.
Nick?
Yeah. No, I will agree.
Okay, we'll get that put in here on the line.
Thank you.
Then the only. The only other thing that's kind of a way to see too is just the weather and planting on the. The event that I want to get you to water. I've seen those things where water filters haven't been great. There's some erosion along the edges. Kind of way to see that and like Chris mentioned, you want to let all the grasses along the bank can come off. But if there's some issues there, you know, we may have to. And that's been, of course, it's been split with the city and the developers. We may have to come back and touch up some areas or something like that. I did talk with the, uh, the gentleman that did it at Birch and he said he wanted him to come back. He said he wants to make it look good and I didn't talk about. There is a little bit of money left in his budget. I think six thousand bucks or something. Not a lot, but. You know, I didn't talk prices or anything or, you know, if he's gonna do it, you know, just cost, but the extra seeds and he does it his time. I don't know. And any more of that detail, but so there's some stuff that'll have to be worked out, but that, that definitely will be necessary before, uh, June thirtieth. Cause you gotta wait to see what comes up and then. Then rest, we, you have any thoughts on that?
Really by June, we hopefully will go.
But yeah. And that may be something then after the culvert's ran and everything gets established this fall and people will come back and.
Do we want to add that?
I don't know.
No.
Well, I don't.
Don't talk to him again. That's what I've heard.
I mean, really. I don't really know anything about a water plant or anything. I don't see a whole lot of anything in there, but you just walk around. Or what that's worth to you, so.
But it's not the nasty figured out.
So.
What were the other?
Anything else on the punch list that we have to look at?
One item punch list is the river up south of the weird.
Yeah.
We have not put that in yet. And I don't want to put that in until it bridges up because the crane path is gonna extend over that. We're gonna have to rip all that back out. So and we either reiterate that, yeah, so I, I don't want to do that. The crane paths are taken back out of the previous install. It's, it's also due twice.
Should we move that then? So it happens as a punch list with the bridge.
Bridge, yeah.
Is that number seven?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah. Anything else on the punch list that? Needs some discussion?
Should have everything else with that culvert completed and I, or we put that tile in that we were talking about. I gotta receive that. We already got it graded. So as soon as we can get it dry, we'll get that reseeded. Oh, no, we'll, we'll, that was not, I'll do that the same, same, same time.
So we're. Are we gonna have additional discussion on the building permits deadline or is that a June topic now?
That's up to you, the council. I would think by the new meeting that.
It should be done. Should be a non-issue, I would say. Okay. Anything else on those topics? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Make sure.
Move on to. Item number fifteen, what we're doing here is just setting a public hearing date. Um, for a general obligation law agreement and the hearing date would be June eleventh, our next council meeting. We just need a motion to set that hearing date. So. Roll call please, right?
Aye, 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 aye.
Thank you. Hey, can I just throw in a reminder, I think, uh. Yeah. The bond action will require a special, and so we're shooting for June twenty fourth. It's a Monday. And then planning on having another topic on the agenda also. June twenty fourth, it's a Monday. So Maggie will be here just really quick at the beginning for the bond and then the rest of the special would be about the bridge project. Is everybody still okay with that date? Okay. Moving on to item number sixteen, um, discussion, possible motion regarding client energy's request for an I D O T rule permit. This land, oh, Chris is gonna talk about this. Okay.
Yeah, so, uh, yeah, this particular permit, uh. Eli is running a fiber line from Marshalltown to their facility out here. As such, they had to go down and be on one fifty one, which is a state driveway permit. And I signed it, proved it. Found out that I wasn't supposed to do that. You guys only. It's an, it's an agreement between city. And the D O T.
Yes.
So it's supposed to have gone to you guys. Uh, I can pay you in the past, in the past eight years, I approved these by you guys.
So they're putting fiber optic in the ditch. Is that what they're doing?
Yeah, they're running it from the Traverell site to Marshalltown. Yeah, fiber optic, fiber optic thing.
From Marshalltown to where?
The Traverell site.
Wrong.
So. What's that?
Our plant, Marshalltown or what?
I didn't, I didn't invite saying there. I don't, so I'm in Marshalltown.
The guy took out the water, so there's going to come through, go down seventy six into Cedar Rapids. Eventually up to Dubuque and then up there over to make service. So I don't think it stops at Traverell.
So do we have any work to do in those ditches in the future or?
Well, I put a culvert in where, uh, the well site's going on south, uh, what is that? West Southview Road. I mean.
Coordinate with something, make sure you say put up, had it on it off.
That's all.
Yeah. Same okay, right where the truck's gonna go, but maybe now.
Okay, that would be my concern was if it's gonna be in the way of stuff we're gonna have to do out there.
There, oh, that's true there.
It's not after the fact.
There's, yeah, this is all kind of have to, I just.
We don't disturb any of that area, right?
Call and, and let me know that I was supposed to be sending things to you guys before. Sorry, let me go. Yeah.
So we just need a motion?
Yeah, yeah.
So. All the favor?
Aye.
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 All right, thank you. Moving on to number seventeen. Uh, consider a resolution for twenty eighty agreement with Lynn County to replace. Culvert or on Angle Road and Morgan Ridge Road.
Yeah, so this is, uh, this is on the C I B, the city approved fifty thousand for the budget for this. Um, there's actually two twin culverts. One on Angle Road and Morgan Ridge Road, Cynthia pointed out that the C I P, I just had to call out his angle. Leaving the document, the packet is the agreement. Did you get the revised one?
Yes, that's what's in the package.
So we're a little bit worrying on paragraph seven, just discussed by the city's responsibility, fifty percent plus seven hundred percent. And it is capped at fifty thousand. Their, their preliminary engineering estimate is the city's portion, it's slightly over the fifty thousand, but. So it'll be whatever the actual costs are. The city's fifty percent with seven hundred percent added. Up to a maximum of fifty thousand.
They've been asking us a couple of years to do.
They, well, we annexed that fifteen, sixteen, seven hundred or so acres that got that corner into the city limits.
Yeah.
And it was within a year or two after that, like we marked places for it. So it's, it's been six, seven.
And I remember the discussion was they've asked us for a number of years, we may ask them for participation.
Well, and so we had on the computer, we had Lynn County participation. Was actually Lynn County projects, fully city consumed, participating with the contract. And then just last year, I think they did a little bit on. E roll that which began better than E, but Beverly, you just add bomb core that there's a very small portion and save what they spent. Yeah, it's, it's pretty standard, you know.
They did a culprit on Saturday sixth too.
So, yeah, when we knew seventy six.
Well, then we do a culprit on seventy six, right? What's that?
On the board?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, we have a seventy six, sell that, that is in Lynn County somewhat, coordinated that to see what we can. All work together, ten deals, so.
And it is in the fiscal twenty five, but.
I'll, I'll check.
Second base.
Yeah, it's, yeah.
Roll call please, Lynn. Aye.
Aye. Aye, aye.
Thank you. Move on to number eighteen. A resolution to approve the fire department vehicle switch with the offer. The chief is here to tell us about that.
Questions? So a long, long time ago. Walford wanted a medical truck in their station. When they build a station, we put engines and tanker in it. They wanted a first response vehicle, so they purchased it. It's in our name. For insurance purposes. Since then, it's been replaced once. Updated in order of it all. Now they're gonna do it again. But to do it legally. We have to have a reservation that we say it's okay to transfer. That title to them. Cynthia knows all the particulars, but basically they're getting the new rescue truck. They're paying for it. It's going into our name.
And the money that they get from selling the old one, they'll get to keep it. They, they, they bought it.
With our insurance.
But our insurance.
Yeah. So, so.
Very simple, yeah. It doesn't cost us any of that.
It's a used new, other than insurance vehicle, which. They, they participate in the.
They pay more. Fire protection than most. They have to pay for it.
So.
Uh, so it's resolution, so need a roll call please, Tom.
Aye, 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 aye.
Aye. Thank you. Just to stand.
What's up?
They approved that.
I'm just waiting for the next item.
Okay.
You're gonna talk about rentals and then you're gonna talk about parking. You're gonna ask me questions.
Oh, so you're just gonna hang out there and go, wow. I just wonder, I thought.
About fire.
Okay. All right, let's go on to number nineteen, which is Chris's item.
Ah, yes. Cynthia, will you pull up those pictures we got?
They're not part of the emails, right?
Yeah, so we got. I, I did, Lynn County Health contacted me, a resident at Railroad Street Apartments. Uh, the physician. Uh, representing that resident asked Lynn County Health to go in there and do a wellness assessment. These are the pictures I got from. Uh, Lynn County Health asked me to go in. There's a building and I really have no jurisdiction because I have no open permits or anything. Uh, and we don't have a rental program. Uh, for rental inspections. So, uh, I'm back here. To ask if the council has any, uh, desire to start a rental inspection program. Take care of stuff like this. I don't know if you see the pictures there, but.
Yeah, go back to first one.
Yeah, there's some really shoddy stuff going on there. And I think that spray foam, which is. I think the maintenance department put that in the.
Ron did.
Anyhow, you can kind of see they got the tape on part of that, that, that's something that definitely would not pass code.
This might be one of the bigger reasons.
Uh, right, one of the serious. That way it's. Yeah, I, no.
So in discussion with Chris, we considered maybe a, a soft start on something like this would be for multifamily units only.
Well, why not single family if we're gonna do, why?
I, I really don't know if we have. I, I know, only know one single family rental isn't helping. I don't, there's, there's.
Oh, there's.
There could be lots as far as I know. I, I'm not asking you to limit it if you wanna.
I don't think we should. Uh, limit it to just multi-family, cause I mean, there's rental properties in here that are dumps. I mean, they're not hard to see. I know we haven't ever really gotten into it, but. Maybe it's time, I mean, if that's something, so you see there's other properties, you know. Call grass and blown out windows and I mean. Other people like black hole and stuff on rental, uh.
Yeah, I was doing rental inspection up in Palo because they have this ordinance.
I think it would be a good idea to have both single family and multi-residents. I'll see the reason for me to extinguish. I have a next question, if you can find out.
So we do a landlord registration, just like every other town, yeah.
And safety does have a landlord registration through the U V system, so we've got a good handle on these where to start.
Do you have any handy on how many numbers or not really, you just know where to start at?
I know where to look it up on the system, but I don't know. How, how does it work, Chris? Tell me how.
I would have it together in the ordinance first. I would probably start with what Palo has up there, emulate that, bring it to you guys.
But what does the inspection stuff look like?
I'm sorry.
Uh, so once you get this in place, then what do you actually do?
There's actually a checklist, two, two pages checklist sheet when I go into a building, um. If the furnace hasn't been inspected in two years, it's required to be inspected. So we have to every two years to a furnace inspection. Uh, be a broken windows, is there gutters on the house? All these kind of things are on that inspection checklist.
I assume it's very similar to a home inspection where you're buying property.
But I mean, what triggers it? Do you just do it once a year?
They do it biannually. Every, every two years it has to be inspected or if there's a complaint from a resident, that triggers it automatically in that two year window. So it, it, there's some incentive for landlords to take care of things. Uh, before he begin.
So they have to take corrective action. What's the?
Corrective action, yeah. So typically when I was going in those houses up there, they have a few items to correct. Uh, the second inspection for the corrections free, since it went to a third inspection, there was a fifty dollar fee. For that third inspection. There was a few cases where it went back to the third one. Not very often, usually it's a pair of, once it got up and going, kind of took, you know, the problems went away. The first year and a half was a bumpy.
What repercussions are there for landlords?
What were in?
Uh, they revoke his landlord, uh, or his or her landlord qualification. They can't run. Until they get it corrected up to. Up to the current.
That's wasn't that always our issue? Like you couldn't even get in that place to like shut the water off?
They look back to you that you don't have one to water meter.
That's a separate issue. That's access.
Yeah, I have no access to that building unless they have an open building permit, or I see something from the street that I can consider a dangerous building. Well, that you can't see in the street. So for me to walk in there with Lynn County Health and start looking at things would put us, I think it jeopardized the core system of why were you there?
So that's what we give us first, establish a more intensive place, a rental inspection, our important rankings.
Right, which you gotta do, then we give. Six months for them to get signed up, I suppose. Within a year, hopefully have everyone sign up, start the inspection process, it'll be, it'll go home.
Do we have a lot where you would maybe want to do half one year and half the next and just alternate every other year?
Probably spying, yeah.
And I don't, there's other, and at least one or probably two other buildings in town and I would put a priority in it. Our inspection for straight out of the first and foremost.
Cast, go to.
Uh.
Cast.
Went there.
No, not that one. No, I was thinking of there going across.
I ain't kidding.
Did an electrical production on the.
That one's a little.
Yeah, that's one today, see. I've never been into it, but I've heard stories.
So we just need to direct you maybe to, to, um, put together something and then.
Get the ordinance put together.
We can look at it at that point. Okay.
I mean, realistically, I think it's a good idea. I mean, realistically, I think it's a good idea, I mean, just because you're a renter doesn't mean. You shouldn't be required to live in a. Crap hole. Because we're like, oh, I'm sorry, hands off between renter and renty, but.
And that's all I can tell people, they come in, the office quite a bit complaining, and I'm like, I don't have any.
Child of Health Department?
In the Health Department, can't really do anything, this case, the physician ordered this because it's a respiratory problem. They suspended mold. I'm suspected that furnace flew. Or they just suspected that the water is. There's probably some CO2 issues with that, I'm guessing.
So, I say.
Okay, we'll move forward with it, I'll put it right here.
Okay. Number one, Scott John, a parking on Wildflower Circle. Dan, you want to, you submitted this one, and Lynn's got some information in house.
Yep, so, uh, this was. A resident that was on. Wildflower Circle that, uh, expressed. That may or may not actually be their car parked there. The picture, but, uh, expressed, uh. Desire to to park on it and, uh. See what I wrote up on it, and the the pictures, so, uh. Reading through, I guess, what what Lynn had. It it makes. It makes sense. Uh, as far as mailboxes. The. The courts that I had, the courts that I had pictured, uh, were actually Cedar Rapids, they were, they're where I used to live in. And they have mailboxes all along the street, they're saying Cedar Rapids, perfect facts.
So, it's, so with the cul-de-sac, some are the same size, some are bigger than two, so, they're good. They're good, they're cool. You're referring to like, Cedar Rapids, well, just the the dimension of some couple of Cedar Rapids, you have to, are actually bigger than. To, but not to say one way or the other, just for your information, you're said.
I don't know the answer to this, but for mailboxes, I know some, like on Front Street, you just have one period where the mailboxes are not Front Street. Uh, part in between Prairie and Front Street. Who did ultimately get taken for it, those gentlemen?
No.
You want to do this? They had on his side ultimately.
Yeah, you won't see individual mailboxes anymore, they're all in lots of sites, just if you go up to her, you know, they're a big.
Yeah, and that that was, that was my only middle ground solution, is that they were serious about wanting to park on the court. And our ordinance doesn't have, uh, allow within X amount of distance for the mailbox. But if we're dealing with the federal government, then. Most of those people will be dead by the time this mailbox is given. So, without me though, they'll never, yeah, everyone else, okay.
Is the the mailbox ordinance you're referring to, the, the perfect, you know, it's your, your parking.
It's not just our rule. It's a state rule, I think, it might be federal, I guess.
I'd really caution you guys to stay away from this topic, because this is the only. Secondly, there is no parking, that cul-de-sac, pick a C two car to park at that cul-de-sac right now.
So, if you had people parked all the way around that, and you had to get a fire truck down, then we wouldn't be able to.
Nobody would leave until we were done.
If you start there, there, three foot loads, open road, you're, they're around the car.
We actually had a call once, just to go back to the mailbox thing, and the call smasher was usually me out, because we were parked in front of the mailboxes. On call. Because he couldn't pull up to the mailboxes, it's the delivery of mail. So he didn't even deliver the mail, that day, he just drove off mad.
And sometimes over the, if you know, hand you out, that I'm not delivering the mail, because you're the other way.
He heard that.
Yeah, and I was gonna say, you can park in front of a fire hydrant, but you can't park in front of.
Mailbox.
Yeah, the fire hydrant, so we have, it's five foot on each side of the fire. Are you. Current. Five foot. I lost my word. Still, it will, it sucks anyway, for cul-de-sac, it just didn't get rid of, all cul-de-sacs, there's no. As far as, like, our, you can look at their truck, our fire truck is thirty-five foot, I think I got it, I learned somewhere, thirty-five foot long. That's a big, these cul-de-sacs are eighty-six. Why?
Forty-four is two radius.
Eighty-eight. Well, and I know a couple of the individuals, I think they were ninety-seven.
Well, every time they got to development, and put a cul-de-sac in. The two of us have always said, no, we're against.
There's no parking in any of the poles, except this, because they're just hard on everything else.
So as far as, as far as emergency vehicles, it's not working well. And how do you get around, how do you get around the end of Hartline, Foxtail?
It's not that fun.
We don't like it.
Well, until they opened up that street. When we had to go down Applewood and everybody parked on both sides of the road, there was times you almost didn't get to where you need to go.
At a certain, you could do, you could get there, so they were parked on both sides. Even with construction.
Yeah.
We are like three ninety-one.
Second street isn't that same way, there's no parking, or is it only on one side?
No park.
No.
That's the largest idiot.
Isn't either cul-de-sac here either?
But I mean, right over here, the two streets, narrow drives, there's no parking on.
He wants one side, right?
One side on.
My assumption.
Review.
Oh, yeah, one side.
Yeah.
And because they had curds too, the curds, they made that.
Like the fire and rescue.
Yeah. But yeah, you're talking about the gravel swats, still.
The gravel. Yeah, so the gravel turn, it may or may not be a cul-de-sac.
Yeah, they're really not ours, yeah, they're, they're trailers, that's part of their development, they kind of made that. For us.
Right, yeah.
So, yeah, we have no parking all through there too, so. We can't keep their trailers, and so they got the, they got to do flat, uh, trucks, I know, yeah, we, but yeah, no one forces it, the sheriffs won't force it.
Say that.
It's the same, although, it's a pain, those gravel ones, where it's when it's snowing and stuff, when it comes to that, we don't plow them out of the ground, reasons. Because we just tear them up, and they're, but unless we do minimal, we give them a spawn, they do missile, they're actually, the trailers are supposed to actually tend to do the maintenance on them. Because they're not really ours, but once in a while, we'll have some kind of crap and dirty ride that we need to get rid of, we'll look at that. Fill the mud holes, right, so we'll kind of help each other out there. So it's, they're not being paid like they should be either.
So am I hearing no action on this, because we can't actually get fire trucks turned around?
Well, the biggest problem is, if you change this, you're gonna have to change your order because of the mailboxes, so.
Well, I don't think that's our rule. I mean, yes, it's in our ordinance, but I don't think we can, we can change that.
No. And you're gonna have to do it on all the cul-de-sacs, as soon as they find out that you did it to one, you're gonna be doing it.
Yeah, I'll go.
I think most of the cul-de-sacs are, I think, ninety percent driveway, though.
Yeah, yeah, they are.
Not a place.
Yeah.
Ridge, ridge, there's like one spot where you can park.
Yeah, and this one actually is kind of nice, because they have that grass area, there's what, two of them, three of them? Two, three of them? Uh, they have kind of a grass opening where the no parking sign is. We kind of have a gentleman's agreement, that's, that's where all the snow goes. So it kind of goes all over the green area, maybe it's, it's sixteen, eighteen foot high. There through the winter time, so, most of the residents don't get that snow into their driveways, because realistically, we tried to do a fifty percent, the road is great, fifty percent goes on up. In this case, if you do that, I'd put a big area, you know, put on everybody's yard, so most of it, and a couple others, they go in that big open grass spot. They only start losing, which some of these have even become a sidewalk. But we've never enforced them to clean that, so, it's, it's no storage. Even in my, you're back in the day, when they were developing, going here and trying to have a parking area, so they had a place to put some of the snow, well, I got taken out, so that will get no place, like, still. So that, and that's one of the, it's like you said, ninety percent direct. So where do you put it?
So. Any more discussion on this topic, or we're moving on? Alright, let's move on. Uh, number twenty-one, discussion with a possible motion concerning, uh, be the third fact, north and two-way sign, the lights. Then add this one also.
Yeah, I heard this from a couple of people, I think there was a letter sending, uh, I think someone completely different, but also said that, uh, that. Uh, at night, and especially when it's raining, there's a lot of. What's your, what do you call? Too much shine is coming from the light, because there's no, there's no screens on the side of the, the barn doors. Uh, which I didn't really know what, what's called at the time, uh, but, but something like, I'd rather just have the, the flat light, so. That was just a discussion, we had what would it take to install the nine-hands left, and that's not necessarily the right barn door, and then you'd even want to operate any, but it's not incredibly expensive.
So what is, what I love to do?
We got the letter, yeah.
Yeah, during the lit tours, and so I called Nelson, uh, electric, Nelson came down, we talked about the shield, I call it shield, over the barn door. And when we came down here, he actually dimmed it to fifty percent. Um, as, right before he did that, we put a tenting on it, like we did around Popster Trail. Um, but he dimmed it to fifty percent, he'd ordered that, uh, a month ago, and he's still waiting for it to come out of there. So, we are waiting for that, and also, at the same time, I told him, we'll start thinking of replacing the light, because I don't think it's gonna work, I don't think it's gonna be enough. The unless, I guess, because of the, the tenting evidently isn't, but when they went back out there, joined us last week, was, I think, channel what the status was, mentioned that, that we ordered it and so forth. And then they went back out to look, our tenting that we put on was off, so I don't know where it went, so we re-tented it, and we're still waiting for the shield. But beyond that. We're waiting.
I think I went by one night, past couple nights, and the light wasn't even on, so I don't know what the story was in that.
Maybe I'll drive by there tonight, because we re-tented it, and then I was blown out there the other day, and I looked very dark, so I don't know, maybe it's too dark to tent, so. With the dimness, because he dropped it to fifty percent. So, but, when we did that to the trail, it didn't seem like, drop, we hit the fifty percent, got much feedback, because it's still in the break. You know? But yeah, that's been the order to draw around. Around.
So it felt like, I was in place, and then, okay, okay. Alright, we'll move on to number twenty-two, discussion concerning goal setting.
Yes, I'm not gonna read through this, uh, because. Look at this, but, uh, this was something that I saw some other cities have. I was in the league of cities when Joanne and I went to one of those, um, two months ago. Whenever the, the last one was, and they mentioned some documents, you know, C I P plans, and I was like, okay, and they. Uh, referenced goal setting as a process slash document. And just reading through here in the, the presentation, I thought it was a pretty decent addition to, uh, what we could have, that we'd incorporate, and primarily a one-year plan, but going to three. Uh, incorporating some of our, oh, I shouldn't say some, but incorporating our capital improvement plan, that kind of put a, uh. A transparent vision for where we're going, uh, not only for, for all of us, um, potentially to eliminate some confusion that comes up, but also to residents outside, so. Any thoughts?
I guess my first thought is, how is this? Not just C I P under a different name, and I understand maybe putting out. Uh, a second statements, maybe, but like, what are you looking at beyond? Yeah, I'm putting out like maybe, uh, a statement of what our capital improvement project for short, as maybe even longer plans are like, what beyond? Like a partial discussions, a mission statement, thank you, beyond the C I P, what? What do we look to achieve with, you know, and so, that's just making it more easy for citizenry to understand, like what we're looking at doing? I mean, like, what are you, what are you thinking, when you're like there? What is this, what, how do you envision this?
I like. Yeah, so, so really, it's, you know, here's all the things, maybe look at all the items on the plan this year, looking at how items for, when I say this year, I guess I should say the fiscal. The, the items that we, we just spoke about, uh, items that would come into the, we'll say more immediate future, but a little bit of a, a story behind it, like the whys of what's on there. Uh, at the same time, it also helps clean up some of the other items that might be sitting on the C I P that aren't necessarily fitting in with what. The direction of the city is, it's happened to be on the list. Uh, so, I guess it's kind of a hybrid between. C I P, but also putting some descriptive elements behind what those events are, putting, putting a vision, mission statement, you know, kind of, uh, it's just states kind of short, but.
Where would you want this at, like in the Fairfax facts, like, I I'll give you kind of like, what are you talking about? At the end of the year, after we've settled on C I Ps, basically doing something in the facts, where it's like. Here's the city's goals over the next few years is, and I'll use things we're actually then talked about, is the water, uh, wells, and the water treatment plants are our big infrastructure goals, along with. You know, continued improvements along the pond, and, you know, whatever else. C I P, pedestrian bridge, installation of the trail, um, is our short-term goals, while we continue to focus on infrastructure improvements and replacement of water wells, like. Is that where you're looking like a informational, not like a big, like monthly meeting type of thing, but basically.
It's something that would be revised once a year, would lead into the budgets, things Cedar Rapids just had theirs. Uh, a lot of cities have theirs in the, the fall, which timeframe, right before you're going into the C I P and budget conversations.
And would ask, was this as a tab on the agenda for a reference, or is it always in the facts, or?
Um, back on the Cedar Rapids, I noticed that too, and so I, um, I noticed that they used a facilitator. So I emailed, um, Mayor O'Donnell, Cedar Rapids, and asked who they used as the facilitator, was it an inside person, or was it a consultant? And they use a consultant that comes in and facilitates their goal setting strategies. And when we attended the M L A session. I've got the documents from that, they really said it incorporates all those things that you guys just mentioned, the C I P, the comprehensive, the city's comprehensive plan, and even starts before that, what is the vision for the community? Do we want, what do we want to attract to our city? What do we want our image to be?
Future land use map.
Future land use map, all of those things together blend into the, the goal set, and we've got all these little individual pieces, but we've never really in front of it, but. Who do we want to be when we grow up, so.
I just, uh, to me, I understand the need and why you want to do that. To me, the problem is. When we look at our C I Ps, those push our, those have to be our goals. Um, we don't, it's more what do you need, not what do you want? Like goal setting, I'd like to do a rainbow pony circus, well, I have to have my sewer treatment plant fixed. So to me, we barely have enough money to take care of what we need, let alone spending time trying to figure out what our. Goals are going to be at this point, to me, it would make more sense to do a C I P, to say this is our, our short-term C I P, and this is why. And then, you know, and then just leave it at that, because those things change depending on, not what we want, but what some, you know, who, who's got the biggest need. Yeah, like, we don't have an option about the bridge, we don't have an option about the well.
Well, not, not to dump it on Joanne, but you could basically take the goal setting and incorporate it into the mayor's minutes, like on the, um.
Project page.
For project page for the Fairfax facts, uh, once a year, I know you were saying, talking about them leading into C I P, but instead do it after C I P, where we're like, these are the. Things that we have selected for the year.
Our priorities.
Yeah, priorities, because sometimes I agree, you can look at some of these budgeting items or the C I P list and. You know, people who don't do this every month or see it every year, it can be misleading or it can't make or doesn't make a lot of sense, so. I understand it, you know, at the end of the year, we go, here's our C R P, C I P plan, so what we want to do and then. In like a a summary page in a fair fact fact, we kind of put it in more language terms where. Hey, we're gonna put in, you know. Wells because we put in a new well about every twenty years. And we're at the twenty-three, mark twenty-five, whatever, because we need, we're required. Or we put in more water source because, you know, required, you know, don't, you don't have to get into the weeds like, we have to meet peak usage at. Twenty-four hours straight as like.
Well, and I think people confuse the two. They think. The well, the water, all that stuff is one thing. They don't realize that the storage tank has nothing to do with the well.
And I get like the land usage thing, but I don't know if I put that in there, because I think a lot of people think because that's there, that's what's gonna happen. And all that is, is that's that, that will change your minds, you know?
Wouldn't this, wouldn't this kind of come under city administrator though, too? I mean, really, if, yeah, if you were, the goal setting and all that type of stuff, wouldn't that come under the city administrative position, ideally? So.
Yeah, I thought I look at the goal of what happens first, what are our goals for our community, and then how do we accomplish it? And yes, there are certain things we have to do, but maybe that helps us prioritize that list.
Yeah, when, when, when it was, when it was brought up and being explained, I think, you know, everything, everything said, everything, and things like that, because everyone said it makes sense. There are certainly things that we, yes, have to do, things that we want to do, but it it. Leads you in into that, uh rather than being, let's say, more reactionary, maybe when the C I P comes up, we can say, alright, well, we're leading into doing. All these quote-unquote fun things down the road. Uh there, there's been a couple items that have popped up that. Like Shane, you mentioned the road repairs that gets hunted down the list, you know, they're putting that out there to say, okay. Maybe it's not this year, but we're looking at next year to do that kind of thing, and actually put it, you know, the goal, the plan. Um what's the other thing I thought of? A little bit further out than goal setting, but uh there was some confusion about some of the the trails. Or the M P O, that it's like, oh, we didn't realize that we had one going here or there, having that. Maybe in this kind of document or format would would help with confusion, not only with. With with us, everyone in the branch, but people outside.
I include something under mayor's comment that maybe it's more appropriate just to mention it now, I don't know if you've had a chance to look at the county housing needs study. But if the summary pointed out some things that I think would help with goal setting, because there are some surprises in there. For example, it said that Fairfax's population over the age of sixty-five has increased by seventy-six percent. Wow, I would never guess that.
I would.
Baby boomer.
Seventy-six percent, but what are the numbers, though? What, what's the true number?
Yeah, I'd have to go back and see if they get it. Yeah, there's, that was the summary page, Joe, you're right.
Yeah.
You have to go back and see where did we start, where did we, and uh, and then it talks about where we're strong in housing and where we're weak. In housing. I would encourage everybody to look at that, because I think that helps establish our goals too, if we know who our community is. And what the needs are, so that's under mayor's comments.
I think it's tough to, like, we have so many needs, we don't have enough dollars. The way it's looking and goals are are. I think we have them for the most part. We have the C I P, we have the comp plan. The future land use matting, math and communicating that to citizens, putting that in the facts. Individually, just so people know what's going on. But it just changes so much. I mean, two years ago, the C I P was considerably different because of. The well and water treatment and and where we're going and. You know, you want to hold yourself to the line on what you want to look long term, but being such a small community. You have a brick in the road and now you're taking a hard left turn and and it it's just so static and things change. From year to year so much, it's hard to. Have a clear path.
Like Church Street, we were gonna do Church Street, we were gonna do Church Street, we spent time in Terry. And and then other things come up that are more important.
And he gets a cost estimate after you're, you know.
Hey, no, it's all Vanderbilt Street, Mary Ann, twenty years ago.
We can't even get the railroad tracks, though. Just saying.
I think, you know, not to hijack, but I think maybe a more easy digest summary, the Fairfax facts are on the website as well, it's a good idea, but. I I don't know how many detail we want to get, it's not a knock on people, but it's. I don't want them to think that this is definitely happening, because then they get upset that it doesn't happen, or they don't understand, like, you know, I'll use Joe's example every year. His goal is to get bathrooms, and every year I crush his dreams, so I don't want people to think, hey, here come the bathrooms. No, they're all not here, you still have to use the courage. So I think, I think it's a summary, I think a summary of some kind to help people explain the decisions you made. And why, maybe not get into the nitty-gritty kind of details, but like, hey, we're just improving our. Access to water by doing the well field, and that's what our project is coming up with.
Well, and I think they need to understand too that, I know a lot of times it sounds like it would just be easier to go to Cedar Rapids. But we tried that and it was an epic fail.
What the we, the less we rely on Cedar Rapids.
Yeah, that was an epic fail. Did you know that we did that, Dan? We actually went to Cedar Rapids with some stuff originally, and it was such a. Penis experience, we immediately, thank God we had language in the twenty-eight E that allowed us to take our shit back literally. And we did, because once we signed, they said, ha, 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 and then they were like, this is what you will do, and this is what you will pay, and we went. I don't think so, and so we did what we needed to do so we could take it back, but it was not a pleasant experience.
Okay, so that's a side note from the whole thing, but um. Good discussion, but in an interesting time, I'd say we should move on at this point and um. Obviously, provide some additional information. In the future. Number twenty-three. Discussion possible motion concerning quote for the fireworks for this year's USA Days.
Oh, you need more money for fireworks? No, are you sure? Positive.
Yes. P O needs to be approved.
Motion to approve the P O.
So he's here because he needs council approval on an amount that's over ten thousand dollars.
I motion to approve it. Second.
I.
I, I, I.
Easier than you thought, right?
Still have to settle off.
And any additional commentary on that?
Since the last year. This is the last time this year.
Actually, it was fourteen thousand last year. Sent over ten thousand dollars for a long time.
I'm not a side note, though, um explain a little bit about. The fact that it really can't be subject to multiple bids and. Explain why, your philosophy on that, or why that.
Well, every. Fireworks handler is different. We've been through four different ones. The one that we have now, they actually, the people that we purchase them from, they come and help us fire them. Uh if you were to try to actually get three legitimate bids on what we're doing, you will. None of the products are the same. So say we have. Three hundred orange shells. And you pick what kind of shells you want, well, one dealer will have this kind, and one dealer will have this kind, and one dealer will have this kind. So you find a dealer that you're happy with the color, the boom. Everything about them, the. They go off, they don't go off, parts, duds. And you find somebody that you are happy with, you stay with them until you have a falling out. And so far, Lynn's kept his cool with this guy, so he hasn't had a falling out. But Lynn does all the homework on the fireworks. And if you would have to do that homework with three vendors to get three bids. That probably aren't gonna be really a whole lot different when they know that they're bidding against each other. Uh. It would be, you would probably have to start hiring a company to come in and light them, because we probably wouldn't do it anymore.
And correct me if I'm wrong, you said if you hire a professional company, let's say you were gonna spend fifteen thousand, five would be for labor. Five would be for product, and five would be for insurance. So you'd still be, you'd still be spending fifteen thousand, but you'd get a five thousand dollar shell.
Right, correct. That's why a lot of people are surprised that our fireworks are so good, because. Ninety percent of the product, or ninety percent of the cost is the product, like you can go to Walford and they spend. Six, seven thousand dollars a year for fireworks. And the shows, you know, a quarter of what we do, even though it's half the price, because you gotta pay the guy to. The company to light them, and then he gets his cut. The people that we deal with now, they actually give us a pretty good break, and even when the prices go up, he tries to adjust it so it doesn't. About that does so much. And plus they help us do it. So. And if you wanted to be the last year again. You just.
You keep imagining that.
I do. Okay.
So when you voted to approve the expenditure, you also voted for not having multiple quotes, by the way, so.
Sound good?
Good.
Alright.
See you next year.
So, moving on, number twenty-four, review and discussion of survey responses about the fireworks rule. Included in the packet, you have the results. Of how that survey went. So the session, please.
Oh, well, you want to talk about some theory? I mean, I just heard somebody said that I'm gonna tell them, well, you had fifteen, is that fifteen responses to keep the rules the same? Is it eleven to do thirteen for around two weeks and then? How many is it?
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight to just go on July fourth. So he had about a little less than a hundred responses. Yeah.
Well, a lot of our kids, I think.
Yeah, what's that?
And you look at the water usage, we have twelve hundred. Addresses type of thing, and that's businesses too, so that kind of helps to put it in, which is back to, I guess.
What do you think, counsel?
I was surprised, to be honest with you, that it was how lopsided that it was, and uh. Lopsided isn't meant to be a bad word, obviously, but uh. Joe, you said something at the last meeting, but you'll have ten percent on one end, ten percent on the other end of the rest. That I don't care, don't know, and I think you're spot on, but with this, um. It was posted out on social media a few times to. Shake the tree a little bit, this is what we got and.
I think it's hard to get responses from people that aren't upset. You know, the ones that want it only on Fourth of July, they're mad because it really does bother them or their pet or their child or whatever. The people that like them.
They don't care.
You know, they don't think about that it really counts to make their vote, because they like how it is, they don't assume things are gonna change, you know? That's, that's what I have found in my almost thirty years and.
You, the people who don't like something are the most vocal.
Yes, yeah, they're upset, they have a reason, you know, to give their input.
If you moved it to the fourth only, and I don't care either way, I'm just on this, throwing this out there. Uh. How would it be enforced? They're gonna let it off anyway. That's, that's my question, I mean, I don't care if you, if we don't have them except for USA Days, I don't even want on that, but. Uh, I mean, they're a loss. But I would just, you know, seriously, I'm just wondering if you, if you said, okay.
That's what they told us.
What, my people?
The sheriff said, like, by the time they get out to a complaint, they're already done, or they're gone, or.
For context, last year, there was between three to five hundred complaints for Cedar Rapids. And five responses to it, and I think it's three titties issue.
I mean, my biggest thing with them, to be totally honest with you, when we get done doing fireworks on USA Days and we're at the station cleaning up. The crap that they are lighting off in the middle of town is steering way over. It is, it's scary. I mean, we're, it's, yeah, it can't be legal. So like, I mean, they light some big stuff up, and that's on the day after you, that's USA Days, after we get done.
But that also isn't legal to shoot off anywhere.
Right, right, no, I know, but I'm just saying, you can't.
You can't make it double secretly.
Because it's sizes that I can do.
Yeah, and then it's unlikely that they have the required licenses.
Right, yeah, and it, and it doesn't get, and I guess what I'm getting at is it doesn't get punished. Enforced, whatever, it's just, you know, just an example. I don't know how much goes on here on the Fourth of July. In town, how much gets split off at night, which anybody know?
During USA Days and.
No, on the Fourth of July itself, like, so say you can only light them off on the Fourth of July.
I think most people.
Does a lot of people.
Okay.
I'm just curious.
I don't think they shoot them off on the Fourth of July in my period, the Fourth of July, they're watching. That spectacular show that's put on every year, and will be put on in perpetuity, um. And they wait for the weekend, so USA Days is on the weekend, that's when they usually shoot them off. Um because it's A, the latest hour, so they can shoot to eleven. And B, that's when most people have their Fourth of July parties, they're getting together, or whatever, um.
The Fourth will be pretty similar to one of the, they're still having their little small parties, or they're getting together afterwards. After the, on the fifth of July, you'll see. The handful of stuff on the street here and there from different parties.
And I think some of the biggest negative feedback is being done after hours, after hours, and garbage. And I think if we're serious about that, then those people have to be more. Uh steadfast in Collinland County, again, whether or not the county forces it or not, I can't make them do it. But if, you know, somebody sent a picture last year of a huge pile of fireworks trash on the. City public, well, they should be calling county, and they should be taken, that doesn't mean you need to make fireworks legal. Bring it down one day, because having them on one day is gonna change everything. So if you want those kinds of changes, then you have to be persistent, let, can the sheriff to enforce littering? Or shooting outside of that.
So two thoughts, one is. Uh you would, you would hope. That if you change the rule around lighting off fireworks, that there's going to be. A, not everyone, of course, but there's gonna be a higher percentage of people that wanna buy. Everyone that's lighting off fireworks is going to continue to light them off whenever they see that. Um and I would think about forcing, if we say that's something that. The sheriff needs to enforce, then why can't we just say, enforce it? I mean, at least. There's, there's been people who've had, had them called for lighting off fireworks, yes, outside of the department. They don't come back, so. They don't come back, so just reinforce that with them, it's actually a attempt to enforce it. The.
No, go ahead.
As far as the responses, the fifteen, thirteen, four gig. Uh, and some of the two weeks around the Fourth, it was kind of a mixture of, it was actually two weeks or something all across, I'll say a week, so it's kind of a mixture of responses, but. Uh, you know. Yeah, we're saying that there's people that are clearly upset, so they're gonna go and fill out a survey. And people that are for fireworks, they're not upset, they're not gonna do it. I don't necessarily buy that as a response, I would, I would figure that if someone says. There's a survey coming out that potentially would take away fireworks altogether, limit them, that if someone passionate on the other side, they would still voice their opinion. It's. Has margin of error, of course, because there's only. Eighty responses, give or take. But even with that margin of error, it does skew on the side of the nun or July, or, 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 there were a couple of other. Deviations were in that group. And if we're gonna ignore it, then what exactly did we put it in the backseat of the Ford? Why did we ask for feedback?
I'm not asked for a last meeting, because there's assuming certain few people that always talk about. And that's what we talked about, to get a fair representation. Is this a fair representation, we know, we can talk to the cows, come on, if it is or not.
Any other feedback?
I said years ago, I guess, sort of the battle measure for all I care, but.
Again, people aren't happy with this having fireworks, and people don't accept, or they don't accept, and then we move on. Again, because the angry people the most, I, and again, same total. In my neighborhood, I know seven people that are pro fireworks, and not a single person, I've looked at a pro, and then against, I'll say a person, go back. I didn't fill one out, and I think we all know my stance on it. I might have mentioned it once or twice. So again, and I'm not saying just because it's more negative than positive, or indifferent, or reduce that it. Somehow negative to the entire population, and some of the arguments are counterintuitive, I don't want that there's more and more people are using them every year. So more and more people are enjoying them, or using them, therefore I don't fight them, or they shouldn't be, and that seems. A, a logical statement, too many people are enjoying these, I don't want them. But in the interest of time.
Motion.
I don't see any point in changing what the state law is.
Any other feedback before we move on?
Is there, is there interest in taking a motion on, related to. Like, the conversation before, you said the two weeks around, we're kicking it around last year ago.
I don't think this goes.
The two weeks, maybe USA days until, I don't think, well, we said.
Yeah, that's the problem, is you wanna encompass the Fourth of, like, the USA days, and that shifts around.
USA days is always a Fourth, Saturday, both June.
Yeah, I think we said like the, whatever Saturday of this, to whatever Sat- or Sunday of whatever, but.
This year will be your biggest one though, because it is a whole week, next year, next Saturday, so. If it did do with that, that's gonna be this year, by the year biggest one, it was like Friday, USA days till the Fourth, or however you decide, if you decide that. Otherwise, usually there's a little, a little order, because it's a little, it's a four, twenty-fourth weekend, it is.
That's what gets difficult, is it's not a hard date, that you can just say it's this date to this date, it would shift, right? Then people would be like, oh, I didn't know.
Even more difficult for the charity and the fourth season.
That's a part of the reason we kept this, the state consent, every six, six, state and county, I think that's the exact.
Counties, counties just.
County support up there. So an even different one from yet another.
Cedar Rapids is done, Marion's just the fourth, Iowa State thinks the fourth, Liberty's done, Iowa City's done, Swisher's done. And the time of share, so it does a little precedent for using resources that you own fireworks involved.
That was another thing, they have fire, fire.
And I live in Marion, and Marion's only the fourth, I can tell you there's a lot of people not following. Not me, but.
It ain't just the war.
I think that's the problem, is it doesn't matter what you say, they're gonna do it when they wanna do it, it's the problem. And then nothing happens to it.
I hadn't noticed that there wasn't a possible motion on this, but I think we can still do that, and that might be appropriate in order. To show that we did take this survey seriously, to the point of bringing it to a vote. Whether the vote's in favor or against, does, you know, so be it, but. Dan, if you wanna make the motion. See if you.
Yeah, we're going with some sort of limiting. I understand that USA days through the Fourth, it's bad this year, sorry, it's timeframe. I don't know, I don't know if it's that confusing for the residents. So, I'll take a motion on. USA days. Through July Fourth.
Is there a second?
So that's the one with thirteen responses for two weeks, well, that's not even two weeks, what are these proposing?
That's the motion on the floor. You second. Motion dies for last second, so we'll move on.
I have to, okay, so there's.
Oh.
It's, there can be no, it's not a motion. I'm gonna change one.
Oh, you want a different motion?
Yes.
I don't know, what's the protocol for that?
Well, it's not, we don't have an ordinance drafted, so, I mean, it's not gonna take effect, I mean, you can make whatever motion you want, but. So you change the ordinance, I can take that.
Okay, so.
Go ahead, Tom.
This is my opinion, is. I feel more responsible, I'm responsible for what the citizens want. There's less than eighty responses out of, I'm gonna say, twelve hundred. Users, resident, addresses, and that's what the response is, and I think I can vacation for that. And if those people that call me up or say about how they wanted it, and say, did you talk, did you, you had an opportunity to speak your mind? Social media, email, drop it in the mail, you did. So. Motion's already been canceled, but I, I will say that. I don't agree with that, I was one of the fifteen, keep it the same, keep the book on, I never won fifteen, I, I'll be honest, but forty-eight responses. It's, it's not about me. I had a chance, you say that there are more people that enjoy it, but I read through what a lot of those people said. Those here, theirs, whatever may be, I get that. I, I have to be sensitive to that. I say maybe.
Okay, so it's not a motion, I think.
I can't make that motion, can I?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll make a motion.
Okay.
None or on, only on the Fourth of July, or only on the Fourth of July, there's two options, or only on.
That's what you're making the motion to?
Just the, just, 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 just for, well. The four gig responses were for none or only on the Fourth of July, so you have to choose one or the other, right?
So that would be none on USA days.
Just making a motion to the majority, so.
So that's motion on the floor.
I'll say.
We've got a second. All in favor?
Now.
Hi. Three, two names, three, three names, and then, okay. So then, motion fail. Okay.
Now. Bring it back up in the, for.
In order to bring it back up, it has to be with the prevailing vote.
Right. Oh, is that just every year?
That's okay, someone will bring it up next year, and they'll.
Do every single year.
It, I don't think the policy says a timeframe, I mean, it's not state law, it's just our policies.
Spend an hour or two on fireworks every year.
Okay, moving on to number twenty-five, Lynn is ready to talk about street repairs on Eighteenth Street.
So, this is just kind of three spots on Eighteenth Street that need patched, two of them, I don't know why they haven't popped out the asphalt yet. They're kind of, the approaches to the, the one house, um, number forty-five, oh seven. So they're, they have two driveways going on their property, and both those approaches on the asphalt are, are cracked up and kind of fall apart. So the other one was, excuse me, the other one was down, um, heading south towards City Hall. Um, right by one fifty-one, and it, what was it, Brian, three years ago, we matched it, we kind of did a Band-Aid on it. And the Band-Aid's been holding, but it's still not good, so I had, so, got a couple of roads. Um, to see if we can get that fixed, because I, the two, I'm very concerned why they have a patch that, or popped out, I don't, I can't, I don't understand. So, trying to beat, beat them from falling apart. So, it's kind of two quotes, so this would actually be on, uh, the next fiscal year's budget. Uh, we don't have anything in there directly covered that. Well, that kind of, our property only goes up to, yeah, does that property. North side of that property, then the other, where those patches are, so from there on, counties are, so.
So. Just thought they know that quotes aren't really apples and apples, are they?
They were supposed to, won't give us patches for those three spots, that's what I asked.
Why is the one, say, eight inch patching, now it's a three inch?
They're just milling it down. We've gotten anything they did when they called in, but just called in and told them the next spot, so. He looked at it, whenever he looked at it, and there didn't.
You said there's zero money in the budget for this month?
This current budget, yeah, there's nothing, has to be after.
And how much do we have next year?
In the street repairs by twenty-five, if I remember correctly.
So is this something that would be in addition to your Prairie Road Builders patching?
No, Prairie Road Builders.
Yeah, it's, so it would be in addition to.
Yeah, but then actually, it's got, all the Prairie Road Builders stuff was spent out of law, I'm scared. That's how we planned that budget, this could be five thousand, it's, uh, uh, different, different life.
Road use, but. That's why I wondered if we need to be talking together, as opposed to.
Well, it's two different life, I just.
So where the two folks, what was the difference?
Seventeen to five-six, or again, like, like, that's.
So what was, wonder what, what are they doing? Let's see.
Oh, one is milling three inch, milling just against both three inch, or, or, like, three inch asphalt.
So one, they're milling out three inches, and they're only gonna put three inches back, and the other ones are putting an eight inch patch and.
That's what I said, come out with that.
No.
And what is the correct way to patch that? Looks like there's two different methods here for these quotes.
So the one, they're, they're actually gonna apply saw, and they'll actually remove it down and do the whole patch, the other one, they're just gonna mill it off. Put it over top. Yeah. Which, if we're gonna do that, they.
So the twenty-seven is one, we're sawing it up.
They're gonna go eight inches deep and replace it, the other one's just three inches.
Seven hard. Probably redoing this whole road soon. How we did there, as long as we do it already. Over five, two days.
Ours is a couple of years, yeah.
We're getting hard to talk, you know, we, you got plenty fired in, you don't have any other rooms for any repairs, you have to rest it here, yeah, yeah, so that's what I.
Hey, there's a roll back, can we pop those up on, can, how bad are they right now, can you pop them up on the map? So you can look at it?
They're probably gonna be real time.
You know, I go up there every day, and I had to ask Brian what they were.
Plus, I mean, can I see how bad are they? I try to be history all the time, but I don't even know what you're talking about.
There's, it's a five one that we patched, that's only okay.
So why are we fixing it?
Parkway, Eighteenth Street.
Why they're fixing it?
And then we get to the first house, if they fall apart up the hill, uh.
Then let's wait till they fall apart before we make stuff.
He's got a dead way to go to the house, and the driveway on the backside of the house is primarily used for farming operations. Basically, right in front of those drivers, on the right side of the vehicles, that tire track, it's got a. It's, it's divided down, and it's busting up into chunks about that big. For whatever reason, they haven't rolled out yet, but soon it's gonna roll out, and then they'll be watching, you know, and then they'll be following, something that, patching, fixing. With the middle driveway, the semi driveway, like I say, I, why it doesn't really get.
Well, that quote's probably good for most of the summer, so, I mean.
The, the calling one?
I, I, I'm sure it'll say like thirty or sixty, thirty days, but if you call this time, you wanna do it, you can't, or do it real next budget, they'll do it.
Both companies covered, they're.
Well, I think they want us to sign it and accept it within thirty days, that doesn't mean they'll have the work done, it's all.
My, my only thing is that's the correct way to fix it, mill off three inches overlay, or cut it out. Especially if you're talking about divots and holes down the end, turn that up. I don't know, I'm not, it's not like. My area of expertise, real good. So that's all.
Is it all out here?
Yeah.
Oh, here, agency, or which one, up, up there, this is all absolute.
Is it up there?
That's a, that's a.
Oh, it's on H, there. Just shoot you to the top of the hill of the house, right, you ask them.
Yes, can you pull that up on the maps?
Well, you just ask them.
For location, just show, okay.
For location, it's not gonna show you road condition in real time. What he's talking about.
So it's nine, all looks is the other side, so, are we talking about the rocks? That one, it's a little, maybe a little problem, it's a little rough.
Do you wanna take the risk and, and you patch it, your guys to sell, to hold out, I rest of the year budget here, since you're just super tight, between seventeen or twenty-seven?
Repeat that again.
Well, your budget's already tight, so you, you can wanna patch it yourself, because what if something else comes out bigger, if this time, this year?
If we patch their stalls, probably it's not gonna be.
Did you patch it the last time?
Yeah, those are, but not, not to.
Not these two spots, the one spot down by the intersection, we put some patches there.
So where, where are we at here?
The phone's far, right, and far by the right, so, right there, yeah, yeah, there's two driveways.
Can we zoom, see everything?
Can we zoom, see everything? This one doesn't have a little man you can drop?
No, it's, it's your edge right there and your edge right here that they should be coming out. If you go scroll down. The one that we did. Several years ago is kind of right down in this area, it's real rough currently, and it's not the best. No, if you're on a bike, horse, I can walk.
So, you got three areas, three areas, like you say, the concern with the two that have the recess, it's the base that's waiting, right, so it almost needs to be cored out and something else done differently. Well, the answer is if we were to do it, it'd be cored out, put any chunk of concrete and asphalt over the top. It's going to take us a lot longer to do it, right, and it's not really a good spot either way.
You got to travel all terribly.
Totally, for, for us to be worked up.
Yeah, what do you want to, I mean, if you had the choice, Lynn, what would you do, your budget? You're already, you're blowing it, replace the whole street, draw out, make a second budget, you're blowing it already.
Yeah, that's what I said.
Do you want to take your chance on that, or do you want to try to patch it and?
If we match it, they'll probably just be.
Or we can do concrete all the way up to the top too, it'd just be just a little different there, but.
Put a speed ball over it.
Yeah, I don't know, put a rubber hand to, I don't know, anyway.
I'm, I'm gonna shot that. I don't, I don't want your budget to be shot already, we're not even doing it yet.
So, I would say patch it, see how long it works, the other one's holding.
If you want, otherwise, I, I, I would like to get eyes on it and see actually what it looks like. I mean, we don't have to do anything right away.
It's, today, it's still there, so.
So, let's, let's wait, can we table it till next month and then we can all kind of eyeball it and see what we think, but I'd like to look at it before we spend thirty grand.
We're not gonna fix it.
Okay.
You want, you want to look at these two up there, is what you're saying?
All three.
I, I'll look at all three of them, yeah. Okay. So, I'll move into the June agenda. And we'll move on to the Prairie Road Builders discussion.
So, the road builders, they have the, the normal streets metal, so initially we walked, or we drove around, kind of looked at the streets, came back, he did the pricing on it, and when they came back, it was a hundred and forty-three thousand, um, thirty-seven, thirty, hundred and forty-three thousand, thousand, thirty-seven dollars and thirty-two cents. For repairing, attaching, doing the steel drill and chips, kind of round out. Last year, we didn't do as many streets because they didn't need it, this year as well, as we didn't do as many, now it seems more where. So, the current budget covers, I've lost eighty-five thousand, so we're a little over. So, what we did is we kind of chopped some stuff out and chopped some stuff out, I got down to eighty-seven thousand, two hundred and thirty-three. So, it's kind of what, what would you like to do? You know, it's one of those things where, again, the budget doesn't quite cover the repairs that should be doing.
And I put a note here so that you knew there is seven, almost seventy-one thousand in loss that you did not assign. And that is still leaving a hundred thousand projected balance of lost.
The other part of that is if you're seeing, are you, we have another S one just for Longview, which that gentleman lives up there and he's been begging, begging, begging to give us a full lot of new product down here, but I haven't been to.
Oh, that's GS, well, Chris Pile.
Been real impressed personally with it, but I told him.
What does he want you to do?
Oh, he would like to get in and start doing some of the streets. I had him give us a price, just for Longview, and if his price was higher than what this is, the chip and seal, and he could not do the cul-de-sac out there, so it's not even doing apple saddles again. So, that was, I figured I'd be trying to help him out compared to.
Is Longview done?
He was, he was hired anyway.
That's it?
So.
Very exciting.
That's what I just said, that's it.
He didn't even have any patch. He didn't even have any patch figured in his bid, which Longview did.
I don't think he heard of that, maybe he understands next time.
Is Longview, um, did I ever need a repair? I don't, I didn't look too.
It's not terrible, the top of it and the coast.
Almost that area gets, it needs, yeah.
You know, that's why that was one of them that we took out.
That's what I said.
And I think that was one, we took out, no, we took out West Cemetery. On that, I think Longview still, I have to work.
And I had gone through this with Lynn as well, and I questioned the west end of Main Street, I didn't see that it was a problem spot, so I suggested that get real.
We took out a lot, a lot of Main Street, so. I'm dropping it down, yeah, Longview, two years ago, two or three.
So, did you ride around with them, or did he give you this list?
No, we both rode around. And then I rerode around, kind of, when I dropped them down, then that's how, this, he did that, when I took him out, so. For budgeting money, that's kind of what I came up with.
How beat up is railroad to the dead end?
Railroad to the dead end, the edges are gonna kind of fall apart.
I agree. That we want that to be a nice street. I'm just saying that we had to cut some more out of this one.
I've seen there's an alley in there.
Yeah, the biggest problem is that we started, we put a code on it last year, we got some weeds coming up through it, I know they're gonna lose it, so we wanted to get that extra code on it.
Why don't you just spray the weeds?
We did.
I put the alleys, they don't get much use, I use them occasionally for.
I was gonna say weed killers are pretty cheap.
Yeah. What's your goals with keeping the streets, is that when they start cracking, you know, like getting cracking, falling, popping out, edges?
Holes.
I mean, a lot of cracking, a lot of surface cracking. Surface cracking.
If you go with water in there, if you have helmets in there. Being a lot worse, yeah, what's that like?
I take sure that you can, if you stay in the budget.
It's eighty-five, we budgeted, and that's through law.
Right.
Well, we're at eighty-seven?
Eighty-seven is kind of what they can drop it down to because it's easy.
Well, let's, let's do that and see where we end up then, I would say, because I don't, I don't, honestly, I can't tell you anywhere that's really.
Maybe cut it out from eighty-seven and cut out the low rate street one. Just a thought.
Railroad Street.
To the dead end. I mean, because that's why.
Even four thousand, forty-nine hundred. Really, the number of people, you've seen it compared to those.
It's a, it's a low, as I'm looking at the map, it's, you know, compare that versus Lynch, for Lynch Street, you get a million cars on it, especially the weekend, baseball nights, all that. I think that definitely needs a look, of course, Vanderbilt from Church to Lynn. Fairfax Road up to Church Street, but, you know, some of the things I would like, the alleys, railroad streets at the dead end. Do we really need the frontage road to the maintenance shop if there's been hickies playing business off the walk on?
Maybe taking Railroad Street out would be fine.
Is there like a scale you could put to it to say, you know, here's the row or read one at ten point scale, it's a five?
It, it's hard to do that because it's spied, yes, actually, you know, right, yeah. Because there's even spied, granted, they could do more spots on different streets that can help, but then your street looks like it's spied, you know?
When you're talking about Railroad Street, you're talking about number two?
Yes.
Yeah, from Vanderbilt West to the dead end, correct, thirty-four, forty-eight, we there.
If you're at four thousand now, there, there gets a value into the eighty-five, well, it's about that.
Okay, and let's do that.
It can help.
He gave that a little magic number.
Okay. I was just saying. So, if, if we pull something out and wait, and it becomes worse in a year, it could, it's that much more expensive.
Yes, no, so the following year, depending on how much wear it carries on, on the winter, your snow, a lot of weather, they're, they're, they're lover. So, that one, I, if I remember right, I'd have to look at it again, but I don't think there's as much cracking, I think boring their engines and so forth, so.
Plus, I'm just, you know, back to what I said, but, you know, kind of scoring them to say if this section, this, this street's pulled out. Yes, yeah, we can save money this year, and based on what you've seen over time and what you, best prediction is possible, you know, next year it won't be that much worse, it's not gonna be that much more expensive, so it's okay to pull out.
Yeah, but you gotta look at the number of houses and.
And then you started off with multiple scoring, okay, so let's say, not to beat up on Railroad Street, but Railroad Street, let's say that's a two in terms of need and replacement, but the traffic count and priority level is one, you know, due to.
And that's kind of Vanderbilt, Church, those are always in Vanderbilt.
You know, Lynch Street might be a seven in terms of quality, but traffic and where is a ten, you know, because.
And that's kind of how we looked at Mean Street, we talked about that, the worst thing on Main Street, and when they grow back by it, it's got spots here and there. We go up to the dead end, but by, and then we use, lower, dirty, get the bank, traffic, and that's about it, and that's only part of that really is a fact. From the bank traffic, going the other way, you have the railroad trucks that are going in and out apartments, so you get a little more traffic, but it, it's kind of like railroad street, I think it could probably get by, but it may not, you know, it's, it's just a gamble.
But we do the entire street, even if it's just like, they might do a little bit of patching here and there, but he does the whole street, even if there's just a section of it that's starting to fall apart, he does from one end to the other. So, it's not like we're just fixing the parts that are.
We could patch it like that, but it's, again, I don't know if it'll just cost or not, but I.
And, and last question, I think Mary Ann jokingly answered, do we, are the alleys like vision critical, need to be done, or like?
That's up to you, I would recommend the alleys myself.
Right before you said that, I was about to say, then get rid of all three.
Yeah. Reason for the alley again would be because it's only had one code on it. If you get that second code on it, it'll make it perform a lot better for a lot longer, that you wouldn't have to do it going forward. But if you don't do something with that one in a short line.
That's my next question, like you're.
You just threw away, and the two trucks of the alleys, the first two from Vanderbilt, the last truck is to the apartments, which I don't know how that was ever allowed, the ours began, you know, is it?
Sort of like a driveway, yeah.
And we're following it, and a lot of those, so it's, I don't understand it.
Well, that's history, which.
So, how I understand it, you have a motion to take the forty-four, forty-eighth railroad out, which gets your quote down to within the budget, right? Everything else.
Sorry.
On there?
Maybe the department's own pads and better than that, we haven't forgotten that, or they've never grown out, there's the brand, we don't have that out there.
Well, we already covered item number twenty-seven because we moved it up, so now we're on to item number twenty-eight. On park signs, so Joe, you've got the floor on this one. What do you, what you want open, Joe?
The, not the quote, the one right to the picture, so we'll start with just the picture. In twenty-twenty, Vision Committee had a report came back, and one of the things that they had talked about was park signage and identification and kind of like a, a family of signs, and they showed us some, some different examples. Eventually, what we went with in the complex was what you're seeing up there right now, that particular sign. And what the Parks Committee, or Parks Board and the committee has done is with that theme, take a look at a couple of more parks, and the parks are City Park, Prairie Creek Park, and Heartland Heights Park for the new signage. This is, this particular one is Cedar Rapids Signs. Drawing illustration of what the Prairie Creek Park and this golf course would look like, that's not the one we voted on. I showed that just so you had a comparison. Here is the Heartland Heights model, and I think there's another page below this, Cynthia, is that correct?
That's one of one.
There should, there should be another photo, there's the Prairie Creek Park sign that they have voted on, is this, this sign, because it goes with the, it's kind of same thing as the City Park sign, the complex sign.
They voted on that?
And the Heartland Heights, does that have a second page? There we go. This is from Media Quest, and the second page, the only difference on this, you'll see the Heartland Heights Park, the writing and the direction of it is different than the first one. You look at that first one, it kind of looks like an eye test when you're trying to read it.
No, like either one of those, Joe.
The.
I think they're very hard to read.
Well, the, the bottom one, you think is very hard to read?
Yes, I'm going like this.
Well.
When I see it, I, because you want to look this way and it's.
Right, right.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I don't, I don't agree with those, I'm sorry, I like that sign design better, but I don't like.
Like the wording?
I don't like how the graphics are on.
How would you prefer to see the graphics? Because those are, those are really your only two options. You either get this one.
That one's easier for me to read.
That one is easier for you to read?
Me too. Maybe if you stacked them or something to where they're not level at the top, so it would like Heartland Heights Park or something, do you know what I mean? So, if, because you almost, your eyes want to travel across three letters that are together.
Well, that's what I mean, on, on this one, to me, that's why it looks like an eye test.
Yeah, so I'm just like, if you stacked them, so it was like here, here, now, yeah, stair steps, so that, that you could see them better, or, yeah.
And maybe put, Cynthia, if you stay right there, maybe put that, that cream piece, that's piece on the other side. And then be able to stack the Heartland Heights Park.
I don't even think you need to swat that, because if they're talking about staggering how the cream like half circle is there, if you take park down two spots, you still have space for the Y on brown.
Oh, sure, sure.
So, the heights would go down one, that would still be within the brown, the park would go down two, those four letters that count, it would still be within.
Got it, okay, all right.
But then I think visually, your eyes would be able to read it.
Because at first, both of those were just awful, and I think staggering that would be better. And the Prairie Creek Park, are we setting a stone on that one, because?
On which one?
The one that's green with the half circles, it says Prairie.
No, we're not, we're not setting stone on it, but it is, does match the City Park and the complex design.
Although that one I can read really well.
So, if you look at the, if you look at the City Park again.
We just painted the wood signs last year?
What's that?
The wooden signs, we painted those last year. Uh, yeah. City parking, you know.
But we, we, we knew that was only a temporary fix.
Yeah, the Media Quest one, yeah, I'm, I'm happier with, if we could put no in front of disk.
Then, no.
So, I do like that one, because it isn't, like, it's along with the theme that's on it.
Yeah, and this is, this is the exact same one as, that is across the street at the complex. Yeah, and this is, this is the exact same one as, that is across the street at the complex. And we just didn't think that this particular design went well at Prairie Creek. And it's considerably less expensive, about five thousand dollars less expensive. This one, we didn't like at all, it's just a, a metal plate sign.
So we're thinking that one.
That one at City Park.
Part, then the one with the half circle from Media Quest for Prairie Creek.
Prairie Creek Park.
And then adjusting the Heartland Heights.
Heartland Heights wording. Bringing it down so that it's stacked.
I love it, I love it.
Okay.
I'm okay with that.
All right.
Can we have a motion?
Do we know what the total is?
Yeah, we do. So here's the, here is. CR signs total was thirty thousand eight hundred.
What?
Mediacom is twenty thousand. And Nesper, I'm still waiting for the bid on it. I had a bid from the twenty twenty two um sign bid where we put. Um, the complex sign in, and I just threw out some numbers there that. Kind of give you an idea where Nesper's probably gonna be at. The twenty two thousand nine hundred dollars we have in lost is, was specifically for these signs. So we come in almost three thousand dollar under budget with the media quest signs.
My last question on media quest, why is the Heartland Heights one brown when all the other ones are gray?
Because the entrance sign to Heartland Heights has that um earth tone, yeah.
I know the touch.
Yeah, so when you get into the park, it's the same way. The other thing about that square sign in Heartland Heights is because talking with Lynn, we think the best place to put it is right on that corner. And if you have a flat sign on that corner, the only people that can see it are the people that live kitty cornered across. You can't see it coming from the north, you can't see it coming from the east. Um, so with the square, you can see it coming from anywhere.
I, I get having a nice. Like. Uh, with like a, a showpiece sign in the main complex, I'm not sold having. Like, I mean, no doubt that Heartland Heights sign looks fantastic, but I'm not sold on. The necessity of having something super expensive that. Like, people drive by or walk by, and they know, they know it's a park, they don't.
It's not the complex, it's the north side of the road, that small one, a little bit.
No, and I'm saying. As far as what we have.
In, in reality, eighty eight hundred dollars for those signs are not expensive. When you look at what some of the other ones. Who's?
I hear.
When you, when you look at uh. CR signs, what they have are basically the same thing. Twelve thousand dollars. Actually, what is it, seventeen thousand dollars for the Heartland Heights sign? Eighty eight hundred dollars is. Is a pretty fair price for those signs. We paid seven thousand dollars for the complex sign two years ago. So having an eighteen hundred dollar increase on that seemed that it was. It was worth it.
I don't, I don't disagree with. What it is versus the, the price, I'm just saying as far as the. The, the size of it and. So. The presence of the signs get a little overkill.
So how much are we talking about total here, what do we?
Twenty thousand dollars of the media quest bid.
And those were the ones that you, we all watched? And you had twenty thousand dollars budgeted?
Twenty two nine.
So you're within your budget?
Well, within the budget, yeah.
Are they supposed to be lighted?
Um, they, they don't have to be, right now, I don't think there's electricity at Heartland Heights or at.
Why are kids there after dark?
Well, I'm just saying, because you're gonna at least double the price to electrical.
Well, they're. Yeah, they're, they're not lighting, the, the complex one wasn't lit either until we ran electrical there last year.
Have they hollowed it, what interior lighting on or not? Just off lighting up?
That's, that's not what the plan is right now.
Can we do solar, solar spotlights?
You say the ones you order, are they hollow there or not?
I'm sorry.
The ones that you, that they have, are they translucent inside or no?
No.
Okay, so it'd be off lighting up anyway.
Which generates complaints?
Hmm?
Which generates complaints?
Okay, I'm gonna move that, we go ahead and group the twenty thousand dollar ones that. That Joe's budget. That's for my four signs then.
Three.
That's three signs, Heartland Heights, Prairie Creek, and City.
Okay.
With the um wording adjusted. Do you want to see that concept before you order?
No.
I think I can visualize it.
Do we have a second, actually, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye, aye. No.
Aye. Okay. Motion carries. Move on to twenty nine. Uh, resolution concerning employee compensation in your packet. Or adjustments, if you have any mention.
Um, Tina has received her CMC, which is exciting, and that's just part of our regular certification special. Um. I'm going through the. Manual, we kind of come up with maybe a different um. Um, terminology to have Jaden and Tegan listed, and then Joe has a quarter raise for two park people that are. Um.
Adam Gray and Leah Schmidt have been there for four years, and um, how they didn't get an increase at the beginning of the year is on me. Um, I just didn't put it in, so it's twenty five cents for each one of them.
Going back to the beginning of.
Going back to the beginning, yeah, of the season, correct.
All motion.
Need a second?
Second.
Roll call things, are you?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, aye, aye.
Thank you. Item number thirty, resolution to approve the revised personnel policy, also in your packet. Changes highlighted. Are there any questions that don't know? Did you want Cynthia to go through every single one, or do you just want to ask questions that you saw spotted in there?
There may be takeaways for, say, what's? Or, uh, was I version then? Computers, the fire department. It seems pretty, pretty, what, what was the reason to make adjustments?
Well, um, it. The conversation started with the commuting with the city vehicle revision. And uh, communication from the auditor. And then uh, we just decided to go through it with fine tooth comb, and most of the stuffs in here is just making it match how we do it. Um, already, it's not changes like the Ikers. Of course, we withhold Ikers, we just didn't realize it wasn't a system, the employment.
Most of this is just language based.
Yeah.
They're not actual.
The, um, so, um, the commuting thing is brand new. Uh, we took out some of the old reference to the old way we used to do uniforms. We slightly revised the wording of the uh, personal protective equipment needed at the parks or the maintenance department, so. You know, do they have to have pants on, do they have to have shoes on? I mean, long pants. Steel toed shoes or whatever, so we tried to just word it so that it had to. Uh, follow OSHA guidelines for what they're doing. Um.
I missed the vehicle part, which, which link is that?
Page one.
Yeah.
Oh, is that one?
What section number is it, nine what?
Nine, first language of nine.
Nine point what?
Seven.
Seven. Whatever. That's.
Nine, nine two, that's the vehicle.
Okay.
So. Bottom, actually.
Um, so, um. When we started talking about the city administrator kind of um. Brought up other questions, and we do have an employee that um had. Uh, the mayor had previously approved to uh commute with the vehicle for savings for the city, because it's. Shorter from his house to go to the parks than back to the shop and then back to the parks, but um. And then we found out that you cities can do that if it's to a benefit to the city, but it's supposed to be a taxable benefit of a dollar fifty each way for the commute. Um, so we're not um getting the dollar fifty from the employee, we're not paying a dollar fifty. It's just a taxable benefit that would be um taxable to the employee for three dollars a day.
So taxing the employee three dollars a day.
Well, it, it adds three dollars to their taxable. Uh, income, so it's not three dollars in tax. It's adding to his gross taxable income, just like if we pay for non-safety jeans, that's a taxable benefit. So it gets added to their gross, and so their federal and state obligation will change based on it. Uh, but the city and uh, for the commuting, the city doesn't get the three dollars from the employee. Employee doesn't pay three dollars a day, but they will pay some in added tax. And that, we had many communications back and forth with the auditor and reading. Uh, an IRS flyer and trying to get them to. Commit to that actual wording, the IRS, I'm, I'm comfortable that we have it worded like they expect us to word it.
Only suit, we're not tax, that's not happening though, or it is, they are adding that taxable.
We haven't started it yet, because you haven't approved this, why do you know, that seems stupid.
So this is so they can just go to the park instead of going to the shop and then going to the.
Yes. Or, you know, uh, there's only, there's just the one employee doing it now, and that, that's the route, but it could be any employee where they live or what. You know, they're, I would say the city decided that whoever was on duty should take. The city truck home. You know, then there would be a taxable benefit to the community.
So what's, what's the process for? If, I, I almost said perfect exchange of the drugs, but. So employee B says that they want a vehicle, and they want to commute where they, they live, doesn't matter. Uh. What's the process for that, to say, to prepare? I, I would imagine if a bunch of people just raised their hand and said that they want, we're gonna run out of vehicles.
Well, she said it has to be profitable to the city.
Yeah, it has to be to the city's benefit, and it has to be determined by management. Isn't just the employee wants it, it has, there has to be a benefit to the city. And it says it right there, if the city of Fairfax management determines that there is a benefit to the city for an employee to take on the city-owned vehicle. And use it for commuting. Then. Blah, blah, blah.
So in this case, we're saving overtime by not making him drive an extra ten minutes to drop it off?
Uh.
That would be on the clock, wouldn't it?
Well, yeah, that would be on the clock, and um, we are um saving miles on the city vehicle.
Why, why would driving? You don't, you're saying that instead of picking up the, the car?
So if you're returning a city vehicle. To.
You're on the clock when you, as you return.
Clock, what you're doing.
Yes.
But not to pick it up?
No.
Not to pick it up and drive it, so if you're spending an extra ten minutes driving somewhere, ten minutes, five times a week, or six or seven, if it's on the weekend and you're doing city related business, that's. One hour of overtime per week.
Well, it may or may not be overtime.
If they're, I will say that they're working the full forty hours a week. So now to save. Three dollars a day, we're paying thirty six, first you. Five dollars in overtime?
Well, and the city's not saving anything, I want to.
I understand that, that we're. The city's losing money paying overtime. By having returned the vehicle.
I, I, I can't speak to that, they could be returning the vehicle on their regular time, within their forty hours.
They're getting paid, which is not necessary.
Yes.
By that logic, then. You could have a lot of employees that would have been that big of, that technically saves the city money.
Is, this is come up because of the honor? He brought it up?
Well, Joanne brought it up, and then um, I had to ask the auditor for input. Because I did not have the answer.
And we just have one person doing this?
Yes.
How did that get started?
It got started because the, the first thing I do in the morning is check Hawks Ridge Park. I live three blocks away from Hawks Ridge Park. The last thing I do at night is check Hawks Ridge Park. I live three blocks from Hawks Ridge Park. It made more sense to have the truck home and start there to go to Hawks. And then end at Hawks instead of going back into the shop, bringing the truck back to Hawks. Then going to Hawks and then taking the truck back to Hawks. Or back to the shop, so. I will tell you guys this, I'm the one right now that's affected by this, because it's the tax liability on me, but I will tell you, if this is a law, if this is an IRS law. Then. I'm happy to get charged the three dollars a day. I think it still is a benefit for the city for me to have the truck where I have it.
Well, that means, I was trying to figure out if they went to that park and then went to this, like, where, that didn't make any sense to me.
Yeah.
That makes that.
And at the time that that was put in place, that um, Bernie, the mayor, determined that that was a benefit to the city.
But I, I don't think Cynthia, that there's an option.
Well, if you're doing it, it's gotta be.
Yeah.
The community, we have to follow the IRS regulations. If you don't want the employee to have that option.
I couldn't figure out why someone would be at like the big park and then would then not just drive the truck back and then, and that didn't make any sense to me. But he's looking, he's up here with that park and he's going home, he's going back.
So you drive a half mile to your house, and we don't pay you? Or you drive two miles to the maintenance shed and we do pay you?
Yeah.
I don't know, it seems so.
That's what I'm starting to derive by this whole thing.
I get, I get what you mean, but I'm saying this is a slippery slope.
No, we're not gonna have to.
Me neither.
No part of that, so. It's too nice to be fingers in the mouth.
Okay, so what do we need to do here, can we just approve all this stuff? This is. I'll, I'll make a motion to approve all this stuff, because I don't think there's any good answers to any of that, other than you've got to do what.
The IRS says, yeah, yeah.
So he, he, and he's already said if it's the law, it's fine, but I'm making sure that. Are, are we gonna start paying him now and take the car? To the, the truck to the shed, or we're just making sure we take?
Well, this is here, if he chooses to still commute. Or if the city still determines it's a benefit to us, then it's gotta be a taxable benefit.
Yes.
Based on this, if he decides, no, I'm gonna take it to the shop, then. That's what.
Then he won't be taxed.
Right.
And will pay.
Right. Yeah. Yeah. Yes.
I haven't spent as much time.
I spend three dollars just.
Can't give that time back.
No. No.
So did you make a motion, Mary Ann?
I should make a motion.
We need a second?
I'll say it.
Roll call please, Tom, you're like, start.
All right. All right. All right.
All right.
Thank you, thirty-one. Transfer of debts, Cynthia?
This, we pay debt payments December one and June one and this is just the regular. Semi-annual transfer resolution.
I'll make a motion.
Roll call please, Mary Ann?
Hi.
Hi, hi, hi.
Thank you. Thirty-two, utility rates. We are.
Did you hear the brakes?
Turn down the number thirty-two, that's. So you're suggesting that we move this to the special council meeting that we're holding in June, is that what I just heard Mary Ann motion?
I'm just wondering, yes, I'm, I'm in no shape to discuss that.
Okay.
I have a question, I have a rate calculator. Hey, so I have nothing wrong with it, but maybe I'm stupid, but I didn't see anywhere that showed. Where the ending balance or expense to be if we changed. You know, like suggested one and two, I would change eleven, eleven, fifteen, twelve, something like that.
The expenses would change.
Or you mean the net?
The revenue for what, what our ultimate, you know, plus or minus would be because, you know, like.
Yeah, well, I didn't write a ten-page spreadsheet with that complex. I was hoping that you were just gonna look at, you know, kind of a percentage and what it would do to an individual. And then we could extrapolate, if you have ideas, then we can extrapolate it out to the totals, but I did revise. So I did revise it. I think Tom asked that it showed the total dis- debt service netted, right?
Yeah.
Or.
Option, option one, I think my torture did that. If we move this on to next one, that's fine, we'd see. Or maybe you put it on the agenda because that thought that what you're anybody else there, option one. Lower. The sewer or raise the water towards only about what we needed to cover. For water and then sewer, we're still covered. That was about the basic, and I'm gonna have to be increases. Yeah, on the blue, so that column K. And then you scroll down just a couple of lines to where that will show. The ten, twenty. That percent right there all the way across and that balanced into where that covered. What was needed, which was what, twelve? We needed an extra. Twelve thousand, two oh nine. And your calculations is about spot on, but adjusting. Sewer down a little bit. And then water increasing.
And if you want, I can. Try to modify this somewhat, but I can only do so much and.
I'll, I'll play it. And I was just looking for a piece where I get to get the one number to eventually get to zero for payment, but I'll. I'll play around. Do you have that, would you send me? Cynthia, that, that should have another column on the far right, the change.
I don't know that I have it. I thought that's what that was, but I don't know, I'll, I'll make sure everybody gets that if there's something else.
That's what helped. Right, that gets us just to the projection of the water.
The debt service.
The debt service, yeah. And it reduced a little bit, so then.
You know, I, I don't. Mind moving it to the special, but you will eventually have to talk about it and come. We've been talking about.
Same thing about thirty-three. Okay, those should not be at the end of the meeting. Well, this is a very important decision and I think we really do need to look hard at the options and come up with even different options and make your presented here, so out of fairness to the topic. Well, that's what I'm saying, it's just not the ideal place for that to be is at the very end. So I. So are we moving it to specialist F? Rather than.
Number thirty-three.
That Monday, June.
Twenty-fourth.
Thirty-two and thirty-three. Okay. I think Mary Ann's, when she's telling us. I just, I just think that we should.
Like you know, seriously, say, we're gonna spend some time talking about this.
Yeah, and I don't want to spend that much time talking about it.
So can I ask? If you looked at it, is there something else you want for that June twenty-fourth meeting? You know, I don't want to just be here and then, yeah. I, I know I'll try to update the, the spreadsheet to show net revenue. Is there something else on the city administrator, you know? Just use some samples and come up with. A first swing at it.
I mean, I find things, but I kind of read it, I see. Nothing jumped out at me as like major missing. You know, we talked earlier about role setting and Joe brought up a good point that we. And the city administrator's job, that's what, you know, that sentence mentioned, but. I, I mean, I look at this, I don't see anything that jumps out as major missing or. Needs to be subtracted or whatever.
Does, now I sent Tom a whole, almost, or maybe all of our samples, does anybody else on the council want all that documentation?
What, what she sent me was, I think eighteen different, I don't know, it's eighteen different cities, but. Of sizes similar to Fairfax and you looked at comparisons and it had what? What their job descriptions are, what the salary are, I didn't get into the job description because it's. I don't think that's as far as where we're at right now, but that helped me to know what others are looking at. Because that, I'm assuming that's what you guys used as the guide to these two lines, right?
Yes.
So. I know nothing about a city administrator, right, so what you guys sent me helps me to understand. What it's about, what they do. I think what we do need to start talking about is. What we're, what our thoughts are and what we're gonna pay, because I think we are way low on what we think about to choose a city administrator and what their requirements are we look for in a city administrator. What their education is and what their recent experiences, I think that is critical. And I think in knowing that information helps to get an idea of overall.
Anybody else want the eighteen city information?
Sure.
Anybody else?
I will.
I just want.
Now.
Okay. Anything else on thirty-two or three, it does stop us. If not, have you looked at the claims list? Any questions on the claims list?
I know I brought this up for, I, I guess I'm just confused why. We have. Registrations for cities like Atkins and Shelsburg.
Tournament fees, right?
No.
Oh, sorry.
The registration fees for Shelsburg and for Atkins depends on where the postseason tournament is being held for baseball and softball. The baseball tournament is being held at Atkins, they get the baseball registration fee. The softball tournament is being held in Shelsburg, they get that registration fee. That is for the Pony League and the Little League Baseball Ensemble.
That move every year?
Yes, it does.
So it's.
And the only thing that changes is how many teams we have, it's eighty dollars per team. If you pay that for every team that you have, softball, we have five teams this year, baseball, we have four teams.
Any other questions on the claims list? Do I have a motion to per?
Motion.
On favor?
I, I, I.
Number thirty-five, opportunity for a citizen to stand on the table.
That is me. My name is Joe Kell, six fifty-five of Fern Lane, Fairfax. I'm the Parks and Rec Director for Fairfax, I'm here tonight as both a citizen and as a Parks and Rec Director. It's not a secret that my work environment for the past year has been stressful. In my opinion, the Parks and Rec Department has been singled out almost constant investigation compared to any other city department. I'm not the only staff member that sees this, but the last five months, it has been rammed up even more. There are numerous instances where the operations of the Parks and Rec Department have been questioned over and over again. Even though the department goes through the same audit and oversight standards as every other city department. Earlier this month, an agenda item was requested for the additional review of twelve programs, including the Eastlake Dash, Trucker Tree and USA Days. Even though they are not city-sponsored, I do have a connection with those as per my job description. Of the twelve items per review, two were for City Hall and the rest were P and R items. No library, no maintenance department, no wastewater, no building department, no planning and zoning, no board of adjustments, no fire department. I cannot believe this is a coincidence. I create financial comparisons for youth sports, submit them to the city council annually. They have now been deemed inaccurate and or incomplete by one member of city council. But what has finally brought me to the podium tonight is an email sent to residents of Fairfax last week in which a city council member used his current position and influence to convince residents how to complete a survey. That survey should be considered void due to this tactic. Here is the wording in the email. If you are opposed to the current fireworks usage allowance spanning over a month and want to see this reduced or even removed, please respond to the ad in the fax newsletter, that is not an unbiased request. In the email, there was a narrative of a recent city council agenda topic that was written so it made the Parks and Rec Director seem not to care about the safety of our kids and the city council reluctant to express their views. From the email, background checks. I put forward the suggestion of implementing background checks for all volunteers and employees who work with children. Unfortunately, my proposal was met with strong opposition from our Parks Director, Joe Kell, who believes such measures are unnecessary. Regrettably, the council did not take a vote on the matter as other members seemed reluctant to express their views. Nonetheless, I remain committed to advocating for this initiative to ensure the safety of our children. I just need more to urge the remainder of the council to make a decision. Nothing was mentioned in this email. About the fact that Parks and Rec Director has been using other resources to keep our children safe for sixteen years and has never once had an issue in this matter. More than the city council spent more than twenty minutes discussing this topic before deciding the current process is working, that is not how the passage in the email reads. Lawrence had mentioned that the background check recommended was seventeen dollars per cost up to maybe six thousand dollars a year. There's another statement that indicates the Fairfax youth sport programs lose tens of thousands of dollars per year. This is a lie. As an interesting observation, it appears that we may be losing tens of thousands of dollars on baseball with the majority of the teams not being from Fairfax. Similarly, we are experiencing some losses with the gardens. Correct, we did lose a hundred and fifty dollars on the gardens last year. I think that was well worth our investment in our community gardens. In addition. The council member questioned why we're adding new programs to the list of Parks and Rec activities. The Parks and Rec Department is too big. Doesn't that sound familiar? Again, there is no mention of the library, maintenance department, no wastewater, no building department, no planning and zoning, no board of adjustments, no fire department in any of these comments. The comments in this email should be below the dignity of any council member. Not only has he misrepresented the truth and singled out one staff member and department by name. The Parks and Rec Department, but he has done so in a way that puts into question his fitness to occupy a council seat. That's why. As a citizen of Fairfax, I'm asking for the immediate resignation of Councilmember Dan Loski. Thank you.
Any other citizens that would like to speak?
Okay. Um, yeah, I would like to speak to that and I think other people would too, I'm not really sure. It's not a topic on the agenda, but we can talk about it.
I'm a citizen too, so.
Yeah. I'm a citizen too. But I don't, I guess. Having read the letter myself, I felt a lot of the same things that Joe is saying and. And I agree with a lot of the things that he's saying. I do feel like he's kind of being singled out and being treated kind of almost in a hostile manner and I'm not sure why, but I do feel like that is kind of going on here. And I don't think it's right. I don't appreciate the fact that that letter got sent out to people without our knowledge. And, and the way it was worded made it sound like. We weren't doing our jobs, with my job is to do vote how I think the constituents want me to vote, not how one person wants me to vote. And I, I guess I'm, I'm all concerned about the fact that the way it was worded and how it was sent out. It's one person's opinion, it is not fact. And it was like. Supposed to be representative that it was fact, but I, I don't believe it was. Does anybody else here have feelings about this? Because I was upset when I saw it.
I've heard a lot about, I've heard. The word transparency in a lot over the last. Four months or more in an effort to be more transparent. Last meeting, the Alon Course Group was not. Working. Technical difficulties, but I brought it up last, last meeting about the lack of transparency that was going on with meetings with department heads. Unbeknownst other council members, lack of transparency. I see this email very well worded, two pages. Well thought out, lack of transparency sent out to a certain amount of people. And I think a word that comes up to me is, is an agenda. To get others to join in, to create. Diversity, to divide. And that's not. What city council is about. And I think that picks it out, I could read off some other things that I have highlighted here and there's no reason to anymore, but very disappointing. Two. Two council meetings in a. two council meetings in a row, we have to address things like this.
Any other citizen comments?
I think that letter was horseshit. It's cowardly to send it out to select people and then lie. And frankly, I think it's liable against Joe and the council to suggest that we weren't doing anything or not doing our duty, due diligence. And I'd like to hear Dan's reason for doing it. I don't even want to know how we got those emails and sent them out. I already did it, not my business. But to put that kind of stuff out, subjective opinion, as if we're endangering children, that Joe is incompetent, is bullshit, period. If you have a problem with Joe, you either talk to him in person or you bring it up in a meeting and request a topic, an agenda item. You don't go crying to people in the citizenry because you didn't get your way.
Yeah, when I read it too, I felt it was upsetting and and inappropriate really.
And I guess I'm a little upset that we as a council had to find out about it, again, kind of the way that we found out about it and that we have to address it as it's not even on the agenda. We have to address it backdoor style as citizens got on the agenda. Like it wasn't even important enough to be a topic that we should be discussing because it is.
If I asked it had to be put on the agenda, I'd still have, why is that? You'd have to ask Julie.
Okay, so, well, I guess I'll stay as a mayor at this point. Yes, Mike did ask that it go on the agenda. And I had already determined that I was going to visit with Dan individually, which we have done. I did not want to create any more drama than what we already have during our meetings and that's why I didn't feel it needed to be on the agenda.
But how do we know it's not taken care of if we don't get better, if we don't discuss it? If if you speak with one person, how does the rest of city council know things are gonna be worked on or be improved? How do you know?
As a mayor, I don't have any authority over any of you, over any of your actions.
No, but when we have a major issue like this and nothing said about it, if it's denied and put on city agenda, what kind of message is that? I mean, for you to handle that with one person, what about all of us? He was, he was kicked out and we were in that same email, but we're not gonna be discussed, talked about? Think we're all singled out. Transparency was, to go back to what I said earlier, transparency and agenda and and that's not, this, this was not handled the right way either. So respect is earned, it's not given. Trust is earned, not given. And I think to what Joseph is saying up there earlier is a lot of that.
Like, how does Joe know that this isn't, like, this is out in the public, people read that and and are assuming that some of these, the way it was presented, that these are facts and they're, they're not factual.
Well. Very nice to you, please.
Yes.
Um, so for the the message sent out, I think just to knock a few things off, as far as asking people to fill out the fireworks, uh, I think one person from that list actually filled out, uh, just to be fair.
But that doesn't, but that's.
I don't, I'm, I'm just going through the list, sorry. As far as the background checks are concerned, I don't feel I misrepresented that at all. So when I brought it up in the February, February, right, the February meeting, uh, there was an enormous amount of pushback. Not, not to an extreme level of yelling, but it was, it was close. And then it was brought up again in the March meeting, uh, similar. And to that point, as far as as silence, there was a lot of, when I go back and forth, when I ask for a motion, a vote, it does become very silent. So, uh, my preference would be that if you don't like the idea, just make a motion and just say no to it instead of just sitting there and be silent. Um, as far as me attacking, attacking anyone, I would say that, uh, the unfortunate thing for a lot of things that Joe has are are, and this is not, it's supposed to be a negative term, but they're discretionary items, you know, they're, we, we have to have water, we have to have trash picked up. There's, there's items on the list that, uh, we may have, we don't have to do as a community, community government, whether we do or not. We don't have, there's no requirement for the city to do those. When, when I sat down with Joe back in February, you know, the, the meeting that I wasn't supposed to have, which, which, by the way, I'm perfectly within my rights as a council member to have meetings with anyone.
Yes, you are.
And and all that. So my primary focus of that meeting was I was asking questions about how the F Y S A worked and various, I sat with Cindy as well, and one of the items that came up was the profitability. I was incredibly impressed that Joe had a P and L document started for, or actually started, but it had for baseball and also community gardens. That's how I knew, hey, community gardens were down a hundred and fifty dollars. The, uh, request that you saw that I put in, which Joanne said, no, would not make the agenda. Uh, as far as we're losing money in community gardens, I don't think that that is or isn't a bad thing, much to your point, you're like, it's, it's pretty good. I just thought that it would be interesting for people to know that we're not making that money. You know, we're down a hundred and fifty, we're down three hundred now that we're doubled, assuming no other changes. So back to the baseball, if you remember, the conversation we had was in calendar twenty-three, we had a profit of fifteen hundred dollars. There was a section on there that included your wages and that number was backed out. So there were no city wages in there. So all the time that, that Joe and Aaron are spending uh, at the tournaments or anything related to baseball wasn't included. So from the conversation of we are losing money on baseball, it technically is factually true, you include wages in there.
No, it's not. First off, Dan, let me correct you on something. Aaron didn't start that position until last year. So when you looked at fifteen hundred dollars that we were up or down, whatever it was, that was in twenty-one. And no, I do not take my wages, my forty hour a week wages and and apply it to that because as a Parks Director, you guys are gonna pay me no matter if we have baseball tournaments, don't have baseball tournaments. If all I do is go out and change trash can liners eight hours a day, my wage is still gonna be there. You may not agree the way that I split out the wages from what is concession, from what is Fairfax Youth Sports and what is Parks. That's between you and me and and the rest of the city council. But that split is what I consider to be correct. Even with that, I don't know where you got tens of thousands of dollars that we lose on baseball. Me being a Parks and Rec Director does not mean we lose tens of thousands of dollars having baseball.
The placeholder you had in your spreadsheet, which says calendar twenty-three, the documents, if you go to the January city council, it's, it's an attachment. The, the wage that you had in there was a little over twenty thousand. So to take that twenty thousand out, there's your tens of thousands, but that's, that's, that was background for for that.
Yeah, you, you, whatever it is you're looking at, you're making this up. I'm gonna tell you why. It's because even with that, you still have not taken into account the hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars of income of res- revenue that we brought in that time. Now, I'm, I'm not gonna sit here and argue with the P and L because I don't have it in front of me right now. But Dan, I'm telling you, we don't lose tens of thousands of dollars. If we were losing tens of thousands of dollars, how do you think I would even still be here? Don't you think the city council at some point would have said, hey, wait a minute, you're losing tens of thousands of dollars? You don't think our treasurer would say, Joe, you're losing tens of thousands of dollars?
I, I don't know. I have a.
He doesn't think I would because he thinks I'm incompetent.
To be honest, you were already here for the budgeting. I mean, the numbers are right in front of you. How would he come to that conclusion? That they're losing ten thousand dollars. Joe's spreadsheet. I'm talking about the budgeting that we just went through over the last few months. If that, if that was a negative, just like we're talking about sewer rates, that shows a loss. It shows a loss in budgeting.
Well, the whole part thing is just the baseball, no, just baseball, no.
So if you can't look at the budget spreadsheet and say, yes, we're, we're down money here, we're, it, it doesn't count that way. I mean, everything's, is, is parks, okay?
I guess the correct way to handle that, Dan, would be to come to Joe or come to us and have this conversation and and ask those questions and and say, I found this, is that in fact true? And actually have a conversation and not put that out there without any actual making sure your facts were straight and that you do have the correct information.
I am extremely confident that the document that Joe created I incumbent in my response that we were using on.
No, tens of thousands of dollars, not money, tens of thousands of dollars because a hundred and fifty dollars that we lost on the, uh, uh, community gardens is money. So don't tell me we lost money. Tell me where we lost tens of thousands of dollars. That's where we have to find it.
Yes.
That's right. And you cannot do it, Dan. Uh, we, we can have a special meeting on this and I'll bring that the same uh, spreadsheet that I brought for the last four years to city council and show you the exact same thing. And there's nowhere that we are losing tens of thousands of dollars.
Yeah, I, I think we should go over it. And you know, and and I'll, I'll just say that's just, just clear in the air here as far as, you know, you feeling attacked and all this. Very first meeting, very first meeting, the third thing I brought up, which was a question over here about the usage of a seeder at the.
The usage of what?
The seeder, S E, C D A R. At the two hour forty-one minute twenty second mark, you recall what you said?
That, that's unfair, but tell me what I said.
So I asked a question over here and it was frustration, whether I would ask you questions or whatever it was. And you, you turned to Aaron, who was in the meeting, and you, you said, Jesus Christ, swearing. So that's, that's my immediate perception. I'm, I'm putting, I'm putting the tone as far as.
What happened at the two hour forty-one minute mark of the library meeting where you accused them of wasting money?
Library works different.
What about the two hour forty-one minute meeting mark with, uh, maintenance? Do you understand why you're saying you feel attacked when you're talking about a three to four hour meeting at the Parks Department but didn't have any other meeting of the same caliber or tone with libraries? Any other department? You have a four hour meeting with library?
No, no.
Because I have a feeling they're losing.
It was related.
By your definition.
The same conversation.
By your definition, the library would be losing ten of the thousands to or the dog park or anything. Oh, I know false benchmarks, but.
I will also say this though, Dan, and to everyone else, I'll say this. If I'm two hours forty-one minutes into a city council meeting, I'm saying Jesus Christ to just about anything that's being said at that point too. It doesn't have anything to do with you, doesn't have anything to do with the seeder. It has the fact that we spent two hours and forty-one minutes already in a meeting that I'm probably numb by. You guys do the same thing today. I mean, here it is ten thirty. You guys have been here for four and a half hours already. And the last, was it the last two, the last three items on the agenda have been bumped to a special meeting because it's just too long. And two hours and forty-one minutes is too long as well. So if I said Jesus Christ, it didn't have to do anything with you. It may have had something to do with you. May it have something to do with Lynn for crying out loud. I say Jesus Christ about Lynn about twelve times a day. And that's, and that's not, that's not even joking around. So if you think it was towards you, it, it may have been towards you. It may not have been towards you. I don't know. But I do know what I read in that email. And that email was a biased piece of crap. And that's my opinion.
I also don't agree to a roundabout like it was alleged to be an email on Avenue Street. Just wanted to make sure that you remember his mindset somewhere in his thoughts.
And it's late and we all wanna go. There's no sense of arguing about this anymore. Whatever we need to do so that we can get this squared up, I'm fine with doing that so that we can move forward. But I know I am sick and tired of working under the environment that I've been working under for the last year, especially the last five months.
No one deserves to work in a hostile work environment.
That's right.
No one should feel threatened at work. Period. I'm just gonna throw out one comment. Um, I'm tired of hearing from the two people that joined the city the last year about transparency, like we didn't, weren't doing it before they came. We put every board minutes in the facts. Our entire list of claims, our entire, um, council packet is online for anybody to see. None of those things were being done previously. And I would say most small cities our size, maybe even cities larger, show me another city that's doing a sixty-five page monthly newsletter. It's not happening. I don't know how we could be more transparent. And that, that is a, a staff goal that we didn't have to have the council set for us. That has been our goal since we've been in the profession. Lynn and I started here in oh nine and we have done nothing except try to make improvements and we've made lots of them. Have we made mistakes? Sure. But we are so much more transparent than when we started in most cities our size. And I'm tired of hearing about how we still that they came to almost save the city from not being transparent. And I talked for three years to film the council meetings. Transparency, that's.
I want to go through all the departments. Kevin's department spoke that way. Kevin, when he left, he was still saying negative fifty before he left. He was like, thank God I'm retired. So it's all the parts.
I would change it. That's a question.
I'm looking at it very.
Mike, how, how we move forward with this? Obviously, everybody, everybody has got frustrations that go back a long way. And as the mayor of Fairfax, how does this get better?
Well, I think we need to show respect for each other. We don't have to agree with each other. We certainly have to show respect no matter what. That's a good starting point. And having good conversations is helpful as well. I think we, we all want the same thing, right?
I don't know.
I don't know.
I don't know. I'll be honest, and I know it's funny coming from me, but I see a lot of personal vendettas and petty vengeance that's going on over the city. Do you think I cry about the dog park? I make jokes about it, but do you think I'm sending out pissy emails? Do you think I'm going behind people's backs and telling what idiot they are with the dog park? No, I move on with my life. I don't take any of this personally. But when you start having like these little petty things or nip, 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 because you don't like that person for some reason, I think that's a pretty pathetic coward. I make a lot of jokes up here because these married meetings are boring. Getting a laugh helps move them along sometimes. But the reality is if you have someone, a problem with how someone perceives a policy or wants a policy, can challenge them openly on that policy and try and get people to agree with you. You don't go, you try and make their life a bit hell. You don't email about them and misrepresent what they're doing. You don't do any of that. I give Joe more crap than anyone here. But it's also out of good fun and I don't turn around and trash him at Legion meetings or at the park or anywhere else. If I have a problem with something that he's doing in a budget or parks wise, either convince people to go against that or I lose and then I move on with my life because it isn't personal. And I think that'd be a great thing to start doing here. And I think that'd be a great thing to start doing here. Stop letting your personal opinion on something, try and infect every little decision you make, where you try and piss on someone's parade. Stop waking up, trying to think of new ways, make someone's life miserable because you don't like how they're doing. If you don't like how they're doing, you try and convince them to change it, or you try and change an ordinance, or you try and get council members to agree with you to change that. You don't friggin' attack them personally and try and make their life a living hell, and respect earned not given by. You have to earn my respect. One way to not do that is to send out cowardly emails. Or to attack someone personally and try and make their life a living hell and get them to quit. That's bullshit, period.
I would just like to say that I hope that Dan, you don't take that approach again. If you wanna send an email, then it shouldn't refer to us as a council, shouldn't refer to people that work here. I mean, you wanna talk about what you're doing and not just, I don't think you should be bringing any of us. Or anyone that works here up. In any kind of those. Public forums like that. I mean, if we make a vote, it's a vote, and that's, and there's five of us here. To make it sound like we're doing something wrong. I take offense to that.
Represent the citizens of Fairfax. We do what's best for Fairfax. What we think it should be. We need to get away from the agendas. What's best for Fairfax. And not push our agendas.
Yeah, and and to that, and to that point, it's, so what if the gardens lost a hundred and fifty dollars, it's. If if people got enjoyment out of it and it was something that brought more people to our community. I mean, we have done, sometimes you gotta spend a little, lose a little. To to find out if something's viable, if it's positive for your community. I mean, the first year out, we lost a hundred fifty dollars, I heard nothing but positive compliments from people about that. And I think we've got even more plots this year, so I mean, it's not always about. Black and white. Type things like that.
Cities many times do services and amenities and stuff that is not on a profit-loss basis. It's. Us taking the public funds and improving the lives of the residents. And it's it's a whole variety of things.
And and as that, as the parks direct director, it's my responsibility to look at each individual uh program that we have. And assess it for what it is, and does it make, did a hundred and fifty dollars make sense to lose? And if at the end of the day, a hundred and fifty dollars didn't make sense, we wouldn't do it again. If that was up to me, if a hundred and fifty dollars was worth it, then we continue to do it. But that's what my responsibility is too, is to continue to make that, those decisions based on whatever we're doing with our our programs.
There's a difference between a commodity and a commodity. That's what it comes down to.
And then part of what we're we're talking about. Could, would be helpful to do the goal setting and have an opportunity to work together and uh. Not problem solve.
Every single council meeting, do things different. I mean, we come up with new ideas, but I keep looking at things, it's like, what's broke? What what's broke? I mean, I'm all open to listen to ideas, but if it makes it better, but so many of these things I don't get. And I've only been on this council for two and a half years, so you have to excuse me, right? I'm far from an expert. But we try to reinvent the wheel every single meeting, down to the budgets and how we lay the budgets out. And how we cut the meetings, let's let's have it every every two weeks and.
I think I heard Joe just spoke for that.
We we, we look for problems is what I see every council, every discussion is. We're looking for problems. And it's creating more problems, it's like. For the last year, it's like, there's all these problems, well, they're there somewhere, I'm gonna look. I'm gonna find them, transparencies and whatever, and no touch. But, I mean, come on. How many times? Have you been in another town, you look in Fairfax and they ran rave about this place, right? Something to be proud about. But we constantly look for what's wrong. And. Jesus, we are so far from that now. You wanna find something? But holy cow, but you forget about all the other good and you build on what people do well. And we destroyed that. I've heard comments from what you, what you said and previous comments in the past. It it goes downhill quick. It can get built back up if you can get better than ever. But it's gotta be shown.
It goes down quicker than it's harder to get back to or inwards, that's what I'm, yes, thank you.
All right. Any other comments that I, where were we, under the citizens that are on the agenda? I don't have any other comments. Cynthia, do you have any other?
Um, just to let council know, I'll be on vacation May thirtieth through June ninth. And then asking, does anybody want to attend the annual conference in September? September eighteenth, nineteenth, and twentieth in Sioux City. Joanne and I are planning on going, but registration opens June third. And if you want the host hotel, you gotta get registered right away, and then they send you a link for the housing bureau. So if you want to go, let Tina know, because I won't be here that week, she's gonna register me, but, okay.